Twenty twenty one Laguna Beach District's regular business school board meeting is virtually reconvened. The first item on the agenda is a procedural one. While the public is reviewing this procedure, I want to highlight the board has received all written public comment via electro- electronic submission through the LBSD public comment form, which closed today at noon to allow time for us to receive it prior to this meeting. On the agenda, you'll see the notations for live public comment. This moves us to four B on the agenda. We'll start with our student board reps, Leah from the pledge allegiance, I see Soren, there you are, okay? The floor is yours.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There is no report out of closed session. Dr. Bor, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
They moved.
Any discussion? Go ahead, any discussion?
President Norman, I wanted to make a motion to move item eleven, the COVID update to directly follow consent. Since that's one of the most important items on our agenda tonight, would that be possible?
Um, if everyone is in agreement, we could have a discussion. I'm looking to see where that would go. I'm worried about people who know we're going to try to time it for where it's going to be, right to join in if they're not with the whole thing, but maybe before the facility plan, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
It would be the only concern, Carol, is that if somebody was coming in later judging climate and they felt that they missed it.
Yeah, that would be my concern, only because I know when people asked me, I was like, you don't need to sign in till eleven and I get tomorrow. Right? So timing wise about seven, probably four, seven, I thought. So I just wonder whether if we move it, we're going to miss them. Does anyone else have any suggestions? Or D? Jim?
I support Kelly's wanting to move it up higher. I think it's a very important item. I do under- but I do understand the rest of your concerns.
I think it's really hard to time things and I think moving it up is better, but there'll still be some items before it. So it's not like it's right at the beginning.
Yeah, I think my, my reason is I want our agenda to reflect our focus on student learning. And so I feel that it should be the very first thing that we talk about after the consent calendar. And I, I apologize for not making that, you know, in advance, but maybe we could try it this time. And I, I agree with Dee or member Perry that we do have a lot on consent to go through first. So it is kind of hard to time it since it was.
Agenda ordering is one of those things where it's kind of hard to hit the target. We've had times where we've had consent at the end because people wanted to get to the more meatier items first. And so it's, uh, it's a challenge to figure out where to put things that pleases the most people.
Right. And then following just our board docs of how the food comes up, you know, it's on our information items and business services, human resources, right? So kind of like it has a flow to the instruction. And I think that's Victoria has alphabetized it, right? So I, I hear you though and moving it forward and I'm fine with moving it forward. And I'm asking for amendment to the motion if everyone's fine with that.
Yes, yes.
Jim, so we're gonna, hang on, let me get to the motion, action motion, sorry. Lost my place.
Want me to restate the motion or no?
No.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna, you're amend the motion. So to move it to number nine A. To move eleven A above, um, below nine A, I have to look at Dr. Gloria to make sure it hits the right spot.
So I've got motion to adopt, adopt the agenda moving eleven A, which is the presentation, the COVID nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one school year update, secondary opening and planning update for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, to immediately follow consent items A through L.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Just like to make a comment that if anyone comes in later and wanted, had wanted, had planned on making a public comment, that we would still take that comment because this is an information item. It's not an action item, but that they, so they wouldn't feel that they missed their opportunity. It's a great idea.
Great idea. We're all in agreement with that as well. Okay. Any other discussion? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call? I don't have what student board permission, but I'm assuming that we just student.
It's Soren tonight. He's the only one who's able to attend. So Soren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
And thank you for bringing that up, member Osborne. Next, let's move us to number six on the agenda, public comment items not on the agenda. As Mr. Colin looks to see if anyone wants to make a public comment, I'll read just once the procedural comments apply to all live public comments throughout the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment and you are viewing this meeting via Zoom, webinar, raise your hands prior to the board discussion on an item you wish to speak to. Once recognized, unmute your microphone. If you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. If you'd like to comment during the designated comment period. Once recognized, make your comment, press star six to unmute your phone. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comments. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes per topic. Staff will keep the time and mute speakers at three minutes. At twenty minutes on a topic, staff will notify the board president with consent of the board. The time may be modified to allow for additional public comment. Mr. Con, is there anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items tonight?
Yes, we have one at this time and Lisa LaCorte, I believe you're.
Hi Lisa, can you please provide your public comment on non-agenda items? You're still muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I just want to clarify something from the last meeting. Um, Jan Vickers had talked about the, um, the kindness challenge from last year, um, not being successful. And I just wanted to say it was, but this year we are just not doing a donation, we're not doing a fundraiser for it. Um, it was just a misunderstanding and probably no big deal, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Mr. Colin, is there anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
None at this time.
Thank you. So third number comments, we'll move to number seven, reports. The section of our media allows for members of leadership to report to the board. First, start with our student representative, Soren Temples, report on LBSD student body.
Thank you. So tonight, uh, our LBHS high school principal, Dr. Allman will begin reporting the school as well. So I'll keep it brief for the school. Um, so I had the pleasure, we had the pleasure of doing eighth grade family night, uh, albeit virtually. Uh, I presented on MUN as well as our amazing chances club. And that was cool to talk to, virtually, of course, talk to parents and give them my thoughts in high school. But meanwhile, Thurston continues to monitor students' academic, social, emotional and perform participation, uh, performance in school as well as, uh, I seek to identify opportunities to strengthen and, and support for those in need. Some examples of this are formalized check-ins with, you know, whether that's a teacher or a counselor or administration, counseling, support groups, and as well as enhancing staff suit connections with, whether that's clubs, extracurricular activities and more. Um, and as well as an in-person learning center. And some staff at Thurston recently attended I ready assessment training. And I already assessment is to analyze support and growth of assessment practices that announced power to this year. And the tool is designed to provide ongoing information on how students respond to instruction and as well as help guide the programming when developing these, uh, when developing interventions enrichment opportunities. Uh, Elmore is excited for the virtual talent show, which is coming up on February twenty-fifth at six P M. And the Elmore staff put together a video to share for the show and they're very excited to see the students talents on display. Uh, February is fairness month at Elmore for the character counts program. And on a similar note, uh, students took the no place for hate pledge, uh, last week. Oh, I've actually tried to mention something. Um, we also have the no place for hate kind of, uh, I agree with like, let's call it a convention of sorts coming up this Friday. Uh, eight thirty in the morning. And that's I think for all schools, especially high school. Uh, and Top of the World continues planning their virtual talent show and they're excited for their drive-in movie this Friday. Uh, and on a personal note, I joined student advisory council with my high school peers and Dr. Valoria. Where we discuss some issues that the student advisory council could discuss throughout the year and we had some great conversations and it's nice to hear other students honesty. And so I can, you know, bring those opinions to everyone here at the board. I also had the pleasure of talking with Sarah Durant, the executive director of School Power. And we talked about ways to help support our amazing community district, um, such as building connections, being tuned to parents with the possibility of like, of a discussion of sorts between students, between, um, between students and members of, and trust men, trustee members. And as well as facilitating input, uh, in the beginning stages of brainstorming, what role a school power resource center may play in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Soren. And this leads us next, we'll start with, oh, I think we just have C F E. From Margaret.
Good, yes, good evening. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank administration and the board of directors. CSCA just put out their survey and we have the results, what we do every year, our pre-negotiation survey. We also had a pre-negotiations meeting with our field office in Orange, virtually, thank goodness, with, uh, senior labor rep, Danny Torres to review. I have two, uh, well, one new member and one that was on our negotiations team and is returning. So, um, with that said, we did some interest-based bargaining training, but more direction of what the objectives are based on the fact that we have a full successor contract open this year. We then proceeded to have a full day meeting with the CSCA negotiations team where we worked on our sunshine ladder. And the reason I bring this up and, and want to again, thank you, is this is time that really is well spent and used to really shorten the time during our negotiations process so that we can move forward in a quick fashion. And as we have done, I will say every year, I'm not going to count the small delay that we had last year based on payroll, which was needed because of COVID, we finish our contract every year. And that is very, I cannot say that for many districts that I discuss doing business with the school board and administration. So again, it's a huge thank you. I would also like to read a short statement that I have sent to the board and administration regarding one of the action items tonight. Adapting to our district needs is one of the most important responsibilities of the school board, in my humble opinion. We must be able to stay out in front of whatever is happening in the world, state and at the local level. Today's world is driven by expectations of instantaneous communication with very specific demands on each of our current administration. No one person can manage and respond to all the different levels of communication that is required. Misinformation spreads rapidly. I firmly endorse the creation of a position of public information officer to provide the support needed to our administration and to our community. Thank you for all you do and have a good break for those of us that are gathering one. That's my, end of my report.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you for sharing that. Thanks for sending that email to us as well. It's important that we understand the bargaining unions thoughts on especially new positions. Um, this brings us to seven C, board member reports. For new listeners, the law that governs restricts us from communicating with each other until we're seated as a board. Further restrictions to make it only brief announcements or giving a brief report on our activities since our reports are noticed for public, are not noticed for public comment. As a board, we have further defined board reports through our protocols and meeting norms. We do our best to limit our brief comments, reports on committees we sit on as individual members or represent the board in this committee and professional development. Sometimes we don't have a report and that's fine too. And so first, remember Vickers, you have the floor.
Thank you. We, I attend to PTA council. It's been a short time since our last board meeting, so there were not that many activities to be involved in and the unit presidents reported at the meeting and they are again doing a lot to try to keep as much normalcy as they can for the students and reaching out and providing information for the parents. That's one of their main concerns is getting information out to the parents through their meetings. I think our student rep Soren mentioned the, uh, the drive-in movie night, which they planned and they're using lot ten in the city. The city was very cooperative in doing that. They did find out that they can't call it a drive-in movie night with whatever patent there is or ownership of that word. So they're calling it wheels and reels and they're going ahead at, with the jogathon at Elmore. And their intent is to have it just be a super fun activity for the kids. That last year, the jogathon was the day before we shut down. And so they just wanted to make it like this is not, you know, jogathon isn't a prelude to something catastrophic happening. And that, uh, all the students will have the ice cream truck and it's just a, uh, they are not doing the envelopes or the pledges. They're just going, PE teachers will do it in their time with the students and it would just all be for fun. It ended up that Jimmy Azadian was reporting, Ms. McCourt was not able to attend. And so he reported for Thurston and the high school, but again, they are reaching out and trying to keep as much normalcy as they can. And they've gotten a lot of response with whatever they're doing. Um, member Osborne shared a quote with me that I shared at that meeting of a student who was participating in the kindness challenge and how meaningful the parent found it and how proud the student was of his reaching out to people and that he would see on it, on a, out on his daily runs or walks. And so it was a very good report, but it's at the high school level, they're just really, really working on helping students navigate what they would navigate during the regular school year, whether it's testing, whether it's test prep, whether it's counseling services. And, uh, the other, uh, that's what I have for that meeting. And Dr. Valori gave a great report at that meeting, which I'm sure will be similar included in his COVID report tonight, but trying to really show the information of how difficult it's been to navigate the ever-changing guidelines, requirements, uh, what have you. It was really fun to see the report in the paper for our cross-country kids. It had a race. I think it was Krenelusrin where they went. There was a lot of requirements, but it, it, they did have a girls and a boys team, both were able to participate. And, um, I know that they're looking forward to having some other sports be allowed to have some competitions. Thank you.
Thank you, member Vickers. Member Perry, you have a floor?
Thank you. I, I really wanted to acknowledge Barbara Diamond. That she was such a precious gem of Laguna Beach and she did write about the board as well as city council and city events and reported very fairly. She actually gave me a little bit of a hard time about getting out of attending school board meetings for a long time until I came along. But she's been a wonderful example and role model with her professional ethics and her work ethic. I mean, still working hard at eighty-eight, um, she made Laguna a lot better place. I'm very sorry. She's not going to be here. I also wanted to acknowledge, um, uh, in our Laguna Beach strategic goals, goal number two is about student, school culture and each student strengthening their connections to the school, community and the world by engaging in activities that build skills and responsibility. Well, we had a wonderful example of that on Tuesday night and hats off to our town families and our school system for raising wonderful young people that want to come back and serve. We had at least two of our former students be selected to be on city committees. Aviva Myers was appointed to the environmental sustainability committee. She's just finishing her master's degree at Stanford and I believe she graduated in two thousand fifteen. And Alex Ranagi was appointed to housing and human services and he graduated in two thousand sixteen. He's just such a compassionate, bright, hardworking, inclusive leader. I mean, when I had him, he could have run my classroom. So with these young citizens taking on volunteer leadership in Laguna, I think we're going to keep sparkling like diamonds. Let's see, um, board member Vickers and I have been invited to the grand openings at Dana Hills and Aliso Niguel High Schools for the opening of their college and career centers. And I'm excited. It's in person. We'll have to distance and wear our masks, but it'll be nice to do something that isn't virtual. Let's see, last night I had the pleasure of attending the parent education, social, mental health needs zoom with Grace Jones and Sandy Benetini, who were both fantastic. They spoke and gave great examples about growth mindset, celebrating mistakes, about the impact that our words have, analyzing if a problem is a big problem or a small problem and how to give meaningful praise. I could tell that the parents found it very helpful because they wrote many positive comments in the chat room. And they also gave lots of tips and book suggestions for the parents to read with their children. Then with the changed format, I'm, I'm not exactly sure when to bring this up. As I was directed at our first January meeting, I made a list of the board policies and bylaws that we haven't adhered to. And I was told we had to publicly discuss these. I don't think now's the right time. I wonder if maybe at our March first meeting or if.
We would discuss this at the board work and the policy workshop, if you'll, yeah, policy workshop. So if you'd send those to me, then we could.
March first workshop. Okie dokie. Thanks.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thanks, member Perry. Member Kelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have two issues to report on. One, I represent the board on the California School Board Association. And I've received the, uh, the nominations for the two thousand twenty-one election this week and I will be going over all of the nominations and will be making recommendations at the next school board meeting for us to support the individuals that I'm, that I'm recommending. Um, and at that time, the other members of the, the board can give their ins, their feedback on. Uh, the other thing is that, uh, for school power that my partner and I have sponsored two scholarships for this year to support lesbian, gay, bisexual and transgender individuals. And we're hoping that a number of students will apply for these scholarships, which will be handed out later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I was trying to do both. Um, thank you for that. Remember Osborne?
Thanks, President Norman.
There you are. I'm trying to find you.
Yeah, for my report, I have three items to report on. Um, I represent the board to the School Power Foundation and I attended their trustee meeting last night. And, um, it was very, very interesting and exciting. I got to hear about their planning and direction and input seeking from their trustees for possible resource center. I know, um, Soren mentioned that as well. That was really interesting work that they're doing there. I also got to hear some storytelling about some of the great work that they did to support the community around the winter holidays with their gift baskets and then even a phase two of support. So that was, it was really powerful to hear them tell some anonymous stories, but about the impact that their work had on our community. Uh, the second thing was I attended the National School Board Association's Equity Symposium yesterday as well. And another storyteller, Brandon Fleming was their keynote that talked about his experience in the public school system and, you know, learned a lot about, um, you know, our board and the work that we're trying to do to become culturally competent. I really found that interesting and looking forward to the work that we're doing there. And then the third thing was it's just my daily work, you know, pushing forward on our safe reopening plan for secondary while we enter the red tier. You know, I do daily monitoring of our county data to try and see where we're going. Um, I have daily conversations with, uh, you know, parents via email or phone calls. I also am in conversation with our state legislators. And I made three site visits, one, um, want to acknowledge Dr. Valori and all the site principals for hosting myself and him, but I was really pleased to see the learning lab at Thurston and how that's operating to serve our most at-risk students in the district. I was really excited to see some of the new classroom camera technology and the document cameras that have advanced since I've used them. And, uh, really just, you know, pleased to have had some, some discussions, you know, along with Dr. Valoria and principals on uh, you know, what it takes to run their site safely. Um, and of course, Elmore on top of the world are just running so smoothly. It was shocking to think that we're in the middle of a pandemic because it all seems so normal now and so safe. And everybody has such a great, um, you know, the staff, the students, everybody I met had a really positive attitude. And, and that made me feel really hopeful for, uh, for the future. So those were my three items. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. And I don't, I did pop into the PTA and, and popped into another meeting as well, but that's, they've been covered very well here. I will be participating in legislation action week, uh, next week. And then also attending a board president workshop between now and our next meeting. Um, I did want to share a procedural understanding of item, member Perry, that you were talking about board member requests for information and future meetings. So government code section five, four, nine, five, four, point two, A three states that no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. As I shared with you guys all before, since we're a part-time body, the only way to really impact the district's work full-time is through writing such as policy evaluations, resolutions. So we've adopted board bylaw ninety-three, twenty-two, agenda preparation items and ninety-two hundred request for information. So if, if everyone can use, uh, my fellow board members will use that process. Those processes we've defined in those two bylaws to request information and items for future meetings. This puts our communication in writing. And then when it's on the agenda, it'll be nice clearly defined so the public's noticed and they can make comment to it versus you know, not being able to comment to it, but they don't know what we're going to talk about. And Dr. Valoria will share a legal, a legal memo on this topic. As a reminder, all communications between our attorney and the board, be it legal, uh, legal memo, brief opinion are by default privileged and confidential communications as expressed in law and are by law nine zero one one. So this takes us to seventy, superintendent report, Dr. Valori, you have a floor?
We have a lot of reports tonight, so I'll just save my comments for when we have an opportunity to update the board. So no report for me tonight.
Well, we understand. Thanks. Um, so that brings us on to E, which is executive cabinet members report. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Same as Dr. Valoria. I'll save all my, uh, reporting for the presentation.
Okay, Mr. Connell or?
I have a very.
Would you like to give a report?
I have a brief report. Okay. Just an update on, on staffing. Um, so we just recently, this week, we were able to fill, you know, we had the, our college and career specialist, Anne Bergen had, had retired recently. And so this week we were able to replace her and her replacement is looking to start this coming, uh, I think, I believe this Friday. And also we had another retirement in the high school office administrative assistant, high school support, Mari Anderson. Um, and we were able to, uh, the person that's replacing her accepted the position today. So we're excited to get her on board in the next couple of weeks. And then of course, our recruitment for assistant superintendent of instruction is underway. The posting closes this coming Thursday, the, the seventeenth. And we have, uh, the three rounds of interviews tentatively scheduled to be wrapped up and completed by March second. So then we'll be able to, um, bring, uh, the candidate to the board, uh, for that, the following, uh, I think it's the March eleventh board meeting. So that's everything for now.
That sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Con. The final report tonight is a special treat. Um, it's number F for those of you following, a principal report and it is, uh, Dr. Jason Allman. Um, I'll be, or yours?
Good evening, everybody. It's such an honor and privilege to be able to speak to you, the board.
It's such an honor and privilege to be able to speak to you, the board, this evening. And I want to cordially, on behalf of Breaker Nation, welcome Clerk Osborne formally to the board. And it's good to see you virtually. However, I look forward to the time that we can spend in person together. Again, I'm here to report out on our Laguna Beach High School happenings. And I'd like to open by stating the obvious. We're in the midst of tackling a fairly challenging year. And I'm going to thank my slide advancer in advance, Ms. Weber, for her help this evening. And go ahead to the next slide. And so I'd like to frame our time together as we talk about the happenings at Laguna Beach High School. Again, stating the obvious, this has been a unique and challenging year. There have been a number of losses and mornings on a variety of levels for us as adults, but most importantly, for our young adults as they navigate their, what I've been calling around my house a lot, a less-than-ideal situation. Try not to catastrophize it too much. I think less-than-ideal is a perfect summation at times versus some other adjectives and descriptors that I could use. But anyway, I want to take our time tonight to really find positivity and assume good intentions in our environment that we're trying to navigate, both as parents, school-side administrators, and cabinet, and obviously, board members alike. We definitely have to seek out a lot more often than it is easy to positivity and good intentions and what's happening around us and the work that we're doing. So the information I'm going to share tonight is with the purpose of offering, obviously, some promise and understanding of what's going on. Thank you, Ms. Weber. So I'm going to touch on three touchpoints here. I'm going to share some reflections of our current practice and our experience. I'm going to share some data sets around technology and some other information. And of course, I'm going to talk about the support that we have within our school community, but more specifically for our students. So as I've had some experience using a platform called Thought Exchange, and I took the opportunity to ask students and teachers in the midst of all of our chaos and conundrum here, what's working, what isn't, and what do we miss the most as it relates to the work we do on the daily? This opportunity allowed over 100 students and 70 faculty and staff to participate in sharing and ranking thoughts of their peers. Next. So general themes from students revolved around course load, class time, and obviously, again, stating the obvious, missing in-person high school experience. I think that students appreciated managing two courses at a time. They did note some Zoom fatigue and time on screen, which I think we can all identify with. Because what we didn't take into account is there are other activities not related to courses and their course load as it relates to their time on screen. In addition to that, there was a really big theme around missing the moral support of peers, the interaction with teachers, and the feeling overall learning better in a traditional school environment. So that was one of the, those are the three of the themes that was elicited from our Thought Exchange experience with students. The next slide will share, it reflects teacher themes as it relates to instruction. And there's a lot of alignment in these two Thought Exchange opportunities. And one alignment is related to the course load that students have. Teachers, like students, appreciated the amount of courses that they were navigating per trimester. They found that it allowed them to better support students because they were dealing, like our students, were dealing with two classes at a time. They had a really great opportunity to be intentional about how they engaged with students. And on virtual classroom visits, this revolved around really creative ideas, like a creative and fun question to take attendance on, to open up a class. So I've learned a lot about students' favorite ice cream flavors, favorite best concerts they've been to, things of that nature, but it just really kind of was not related directly to curriculum and instruction, but just an opening and a general connection where everybody can learn a little bit of a tidbit about students in a fun way and take attendance at the same time in a virtual environment. The other part of the engagement that I saw that was really neat was utilizing a lot of the breakout sessions and break rooms on our Zoom feature to really connect with students and coach them up. I saw some great language arts teachers working individually with students, coaching, while the rest of the classes were in Zoom rooms, breaking out, having deep conversations around the content. So it's really been neat to see the intentional activities around student engagement that teachers are implementing, even in this time where we're doing a lot of distance learning. And of course, again, stating the obvious, there's a theme here. The missing the in-person stuff was a big thing for the teaching staff. Where I'm standing on virtually on this corner, you know, usually hustles and bustles with the energy and vibrancy of students and young adults and teachers and staff coming and going on our campus. I think it's fair to say, parents, administrators, teachers, students, the like, we all miss that energy. And we all miss, we all miss the vibrancy of our high school campus. It really, aside from the track being very busy and the hub of our greater Laguna Beach community, you know how hopping our school campus could be during in-person learning. And we're looking forward to getting back at that because obviously, we're in the people business and I really miss my people on so many levels. So those are our themes that we covered as it relates to that Thought Exchange opportunity for staff and students. The next thing I'd like to talk to you about are data sets. And I was able, you can advance, Ms. Weber? I was able to really take a deep dive into how our students and our staff are integrating, are interacting with technology, excuse me. So the next slide will show you what are we on. So these are devices that our students are using typically. Where there are students, half of our students are using Chromebook, either issued by the district or utilizing their own Chromebook platform with a close second with our Mac products and then other Windows products and Apple products like iPads and things like that, tablets, bringing up the rest of that. Then the next slide shows us really where we are going with what we're doing. So here you can see on the left, in the upper left-hand corner, our trimester hybrid students have almost doubled their logons to Beachport since last year. Now, that's pretty obvious. Again, that's the theme for this evening, is stating the obvious. And the number one app that they're accessing is Canvas. And you can also see our Virtual Academy students, which makes up about 73 Laguna Beach High School students. They're doing their share of logging on to Beachport to access their apps too. And I want to highlight something. When we had reflected on our practice in the spring, one of the big things in student and parent feedback was the difficulty of navigating and finding class and instructional content online in a variety of places. So it makes me happy to see what we intended to do. And when we set out in the fall is in the developing of Canvas as our learning platform, that's where we are mainly accessing our information. You can go to the next slide and it'll break our Canvas activity down even a little bit further. And I'm overwhelmed a little bit when I look at these numbers. Now, again, these are specifically related to the tri-high high school setup right now. And you can see on Canvas, we have hosted and students have attended over 20,000 meetings since the beginning of the school year. Teachers have uploaded and students have most likely downloaded over 19,000 files. And over 12,000 assignments have been provided to students, 1,600 videos posted, and actively opened 900 discussion boards for students and teachers to interact with one another. So you can see that Canvas is definitely the go-to platform for our students to access their instruction, which we are happy about because I have not heard any complaints from students about having to navigate and find what teachers are referencing in their lessons. It's all housed in our Canvas platform. The next slide gives us the top five apps used in each learning environment. So these are, what you see here are the top five apps used in each learning environment by our, by launches and time spent on it. So obviously, in trimester hybrid system, we're looking at Canvas as the number one. Apex is the number two. And then in the Virtual Academy, it's flip-flopped. Obviously, our Virtual Academy students are accessing most of their instruction via Apex Learning. And then they're referencing Canvas as they go on. And although it doesn't feel like it when I email students, it's good to see that their email app is in the top five categories of what they're using. Sometimes I feel like we have better luck getting them to chat with me in Parents Square. But I'm happy to see they're still accessing their emails. And just a fun fact here, I was lucky enough to sit down with Mr. Morrison to go over some numbers. And we ran the top users on the teacher front as it relates to Canvas and interactivity. And what we came up with, one of my top users on our campus, and I will not mention their name, had logged over 700,000 replicable minutes between her as a teacher and students. So 700,000 replicable minutes on Canvas. That means that we're counting, we're accounting for the teacher's time on there. We're accounting for all the teacher-students time on there since the beginning of the year. So 700,000 minutes. For a frame of reference, there are 525,600 minutes in a year. So a total accumulation of 700,000 minutes. It means that one teacher in this example and all the students have been putting in over a year and a half's worth of time on Canvas. So I thought that was an interesting, fun little tidbit. I wanted to share a little bit on the next slide too, about our AP numbers. If you are like me, I have two juniors at home in high school. But I was concerned about what their AP tests and access to AP tests last year looked like when we kind of had to, you know, really flip the AP testing environment upside down. Well, you can see here, I'm happy to say that in the past three years, the most important thing for me as a high school leader was that we really increased access to AP testing. And that is pretty consistent. You see, our number did go down last year a lot. We had a lot of attrition because students and parents, I don't think, were entirely comfortable with the testing environment last year, understandably so. With the unknown and being an online platform, it was going to be, look and feel very different. And it did, based on a lot of our student feedback. That was something we had little control over. However, you can see our pass rates, which were three or better, consistently stayed with the 2019 reporting year. So we were at about 90% with our three-plus passing rate. The next slide will show you what we anticipate happening for this year. Now, I don't want to talk specifically about what AP tests are going to look like because currently, College Board has about three options on the table for us to navigate. So I think they're operating like we are, where we're trying to come up with multiple plans and kind of anticipate what could, what it may look like during the AP testing sweepstakes in May. But I wanted to give you a brief snapshot on what it's looking like for us. So we obviously have a trimester system that allowed us to have students access over 23 courses between our trimester system and online opportunities for AP courses. We have over 650 tests ordered. Again, we do anticipate more orders, but I also anticipate some attrition in that once students and families find out what that actual AP test will look like. And because we've had a unique scenario in student learning as it relates to APs and prep for tests, because we did have to offer some of our AP courses in the first trimester, a majority of them, I think, last I checked, over two-thirds of our tests are offered in trimester two and three. But there will be a lot of bridge work that will need to be done. So we're mapping out over 200 tutorial hours from our teachers to our students. Many of our students have already started on that additional learning experience for them to best navigate what's on the horizon for them as it relates to planning and preparation for the AP test. Thank you, Ms. Weber. The next thing I'd like to really talk about, and I feel it's the most important thing considering what we're all trying to navigate here, is the support, how we're helping one another. And obviously, most importantly, our students. But before I get into that, I really want to, I really want to share the experience I've had in working in our district over the last 10 months in this current situation. And I can't thank all my colleagues enough. Some are here on the panel tonight, but also ones that are hopefully listening to this amazing presentation at home in the comfort of their own home. I just can't thank them, and I am so grateful for the opportunity to work with such an amazing team where we can all lean on one another, plan, support, commiserate, and make a really good situation out of really difficult scenarios. So I want to extend my gratitude for my colleagues. And then I would like to share on the next slide what we've been really tackling as it relates to student emotional wellness. And these numbers that we're referencing here are specifically focused from a student support specialist. I want to reiterate that this does not include any contacts that our counselors typically make with students. This includes solely our high school student support specialist work. And those contacts to this point in the year have been 433 individual student contacts for a variety of reasons. And I'm giving you a brief comparative analysis of what that looks like from a typical school year to our current school year. So a typical school year has our student support specialists focusing on oftentimes peer-to-peer struggles, conflict resolutions, either between two peers, sometimes between parents at home and students that are self-actualizing, self-esteem challenges, typical student exhaustion at times, pressures of being a high achiever and really hanging that hat on the perfectionist approach in coursework. That's a typical school year. This school year, what we're finding is we're spending a lot of time normalizing the student experience. And I think we, as adults, can identify with normalizing what we're going through at times, right? I'm hoping everybody's nodding yes, otherwise I feel really alone in this. But that's another thing that students are really trying to work through is the normalizing of this process and the challenges that we're going through. The loss through the pandemic, like losses like senior year activities, prom, winter formal, you know, sporting events, other exciting milestones, something as simple as a birthday can really be difficult to navigate at times. I know I really identified with the seniors last year. I had a senior kid of my own, and I just, we really could identify with the pain and the loss that we had experienced, not only as a family, but as a principal of an amazing high school, you know, 200-plus seniors last year that were going through that. General safety, security, and routine. We really stress the importance of students having a routine that they can stray away from so that gives them a little bit of versatility and diversity in their day, but also they can go back to that routine. And safety and security for our families, you know, financially in general is, has been a big safety, security issue for us. Providing healthy coping tools. Obviously, our goal is to build a lot, a set of arsenal of skills and techniques that students can go to throughout their life. So providing healthy coping tools has been a big amount of the work that we've taken on the emotional wellness front for our students. We also want to, we've talked a lot about building mindfulness and being really intentional about that and taking time to do some breathing, taking time to really identify what me time means to the student. If that means going on a walk, if it means just tuning out and listening to music for a limited window of time, things like that, that really help promote mindfulness and balance. Thank you, Ms. Weber. Next slide. So the upside to all this, from my experience in talking to all of the great colleagues I'm lucky enough to work with, is that we are able to commiserate with students when they're surprised that they find out that they're navigating normal emotions in all of this. And they're not the only ones out there that are navigating that. That's a really good sense of security and understanding for our students. I think that one of the silver linings in my experience in talking to students is they do report being better rested, being at home. I think they have a little bit more flexibility and versatility in their schedule and how they can manage their time. And that in turn helps them manage their emotional responses to the many stresses that they are facing at this point in time. If, anecdotally, I know that, you know... Um, if, uh, uh, anecdotally, I know that, you know, while I've become a lot more close and connected with my family in my house. Sometimes that does test us and we all have our moments in the Almond family, um, for full disclosure. Um, I, I like the fact that our student support specialists, both at the middle and high school. Are being proactive and producing video podcasts and posting them on their Canvas platform. To just kind of, I, um, put things that students can identify with that they're going through right now and feeling. Um, and help them navigate that. We also have a lot of psychoeducation on anxiety, depression, grief, loss, um, alcohol, drug use. Bullying and much, much more. And that can be found on that link there. And also, we also have a wellness Instagram page at LVHS. And that is at the tag down, uh, on the very bottom. That, uh, talks a, a little bit more about a lot of, uh, psychoeducational talking points. So I felt it was important that we highlight what we're doing to support specifically our young adults during this time. I appreciate the time, um, to cover that. In a typical year, I would be talking a lot more about, um, academic touchpoints. And I think, uh, this is, this information is timely and important for us to hear as a school community. Um, and with that, my next slide, just, uh, I want to reiterate the fact that I speak on behalf of all of our teachers. Um, and team at Laguna Beach High School, um, when we say that we are grateful to be entrusted with our students. Thank you. And, um, that concludes my presentation.
Muted.
They're all muted.
Sorry. Thank you. I was getting feedback in there. Are there any, um, questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Allman, for that report. Really appreciate it. And we were nodding along with you and giving you thumbs up, so.
I would like to just make some comments. Um, I, I was very skeptical, skeptical of the three trimester system. Um, I have, uh, managed college campuses that have had semesters and trimesters. And, uh, I was fortunate enough to have a four semester trimester system. And, um, I am just, uh, impressed with what you've been able to do. And what the, the outcomes are as far as with what you have, have accomplished. Uh, I've also have been exceptionally impressed that someone who has, his whole life has been involved in distance education. Where you train people in advance, you give them, uh, multiple courses, uh, off. To develop online courses and we threw our teachers in to online courses. You know, over a weekend. Uh, I think you've done an exceptional job and I think you and your team deserve an awful lot of credit. For such a wonderful report, which is just, just been exceptional. And, you know, Canvas is one of the, um, the big stories on PBS. And I hope that once we get our, uh, our new person who does, uh, PR. That go in touch with PBS and, uh, tell them about what we have to say about Canvas. Thank you.
Are there other members? Remember Vickers?
Yes, I just want to thank Dr. Allman for the report, uh, very informative. And, uh, I would echo Dr. Kelly's comments about, um, really providing for students. And that, those data points really tell us, tell me that, uh, there's been a lot of reaching out. And a lot of interaction, as best as the interaction can take place in a, in a virtual setting. So, um, thank you for bringing us that information and thank you for you and your staff for, um, doing what you could do with this less than normal year.
Remember Perry? I saw you nodding.
Oh, I, I'm just nodding. Yes, I terrific report and thank you so much and your staff for all you've done. And this gives us a lot of positive points. Thank you.
And Clerk Osborne.
Yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Allman. That was really helpful. Um, some of the things that stuck out. And I think maybe we'll hear more in the, uh, hours or weeks that come. But I really appreciated the data on the AP pass rates. That was very informative. Um, you know, year over year, I, uh, I really appreciated the work that you're doing to put those two hundred hours of tutorial. Tutorial programming together, um, for AP prep. That was really important. I'm hearing a lot about that from parents. And trying to have the data and have the information to be able to respond. So I really appreciate that. Um, I liked early in your presentation, hearing about the discussion boards in Canvas. Because that is what college is like these days and how critical that our students learn how to use a discussion board in Canvas. In high school, because that is a, that is something that is, is highly used in, um, all, all college classes now, nowadays. And having just done some online education for my master's degree. And last but not least, the, the final point that really stuck with me was you're normalizing that. There are a lot of students going through this right now and reaffirming with our children that they are not alone. That if they're sad at the end of the day, if they're feeling lonely, if they're crying, that they are not alone. As actually being a very, um, important and powerful, uh, message to them in their, with, with and in their mental health. That really, um, that stuck out to me, reducing the stigma, um, around how they're feeling and normalizing. That is a, a very human emotion with what we're all going through. So thank you for all of that.
And, um, Dr. Allman, I also would like to say that, uh, definitely what all of my fellow members have said. And just that, all the support you've given to the teachers as well and, and being there. I know you were talking about your team and, you know. How you couldn't do it without them and they couldn't do it without you either. They really, thank you for supporting them and, and listening to them. They all have the best intention for students, right? That's what they're focused on and, um. And as member Kelly brought up, you know, a trimester system is such a success. And, um, you listen to them and their resolutions to problems they saw the year before. When we had to go into lockdown and so just, just that shift and, and giving them all the support they needed to, to, uh, become this new type of teacher. So thanks for that very much.
Feedback. Thank you very much. I think Mr. Tippel had a question.
Yeah, just as the, as the, uh, stu- student on the ground, I think that, you know, I think we've done a lot, we, we've done a lot with, with, with what we've been given. And it's not all, it's not all positive, but I think there are definitely positive takeaways you can take away. Like whether that's discussion boards or the focus that teachers and students can give to fewer classes. And that's, that has been a positive for everyone. And, uh, but there has been, there has been negatives, there has been a loss of connection. And I look, I look forward to, as you know, hopefully stuff, stuff gets lifted, how are we able to kind of like bu- build back those connections? And build off of what we've already been able to manage in this, uh, as you say, less than ideal, uh, year. Thank you for the report.
And Dr. Allman, it sounds like, and following up on that, it's not as though there's been a learning loss. There's been a school loss, like the school experience and loss, experience loss is really what everyone's feeling.
At the forefront of any, any kind of grievable touchpoints, it's definitely the loss of the, the, the experience piece. And the, the interactive and camaraderie and peer-to-peer piece. Um, that's a, that's a big part of, like I said, we're in the, we're in the people business and, uh, it's a big part of our experience. And I know, um, uh, I've even commiserated with Luke on our, our brief Zooms that we have to touch base. And just like check in with each other. Hey, how are you doing? And just, I miss, I, I smother teachers when they come on campus, you know, just because I'm so happy to talk to them, not literally smother them. I just talk to them a lot. I mean, um, but so it's, it's, it's one of those things where we're all hungry for that. Uh, the, the interaction and, and normalcy that a, a day at school brings us, you know? And the, and the energy for old guys like me keeps us young.
Yeah, yeah.
I just sort of add some more of that too. And I don't want to discuss how important, the importance of, you know, APs and academic. And a doctor, we'll, we'll say this is the, the, the child success coming out, but I know, I think it's also more to look at, you know, student wellbeing. And, you know, there's, there's other factors of success and like besides APs, I think that we have done a great job of that. And I think that we'll see that students, maybe they learn differently, but I think students have learned a lot. Where that's, you know, whether that's time management, where that's, you know, how, how to learn in the real world, where you don't have, you know, you're, you don't have a school teacher who's like, hey, this is what's on the board today. It's, you know, you have to have that self-efficacy. I think students have learned a lot. And I, I personally, I don't like the term learning loss and it's been a, a learning shift of sorts, but I think, I think we're doing great and, and we'll make it through it.
One of the, one of the, uh, that was, that was one of our PTA meetings recently too. And the things that I'm confident is, is that any, any challenge we face as it revolves around learning. When we get back to, you know, in person and, uh, a little bit of normalcy and how students receive instruction. Uh, I'm fully confident, um, based on the, the peers I work with and the teachers that we have at, at Laguna Beach High School. That we can, we can address and, and tackle those issues as needed and as appropriate.
Thank you for giving us all that security. You're providing us right now. I appreciate the report. Um, and this brings us to number eight, the consent calendar. Mr. Allman, is there anyone wishing to speak on consent calendar items tonight?
No hands at this time.
Okay, since there are no comments, we shall move to number eight, B, approval of consent calendar, C through L. Does any board member wish to pull any item or have any questions? I'm seeing those. Okay.
No, no, I have a couple of questions. Sorry.
Okay, you have a couple of questions? Okay, what items are your questions on?
Oh, my questions are on item, let's see, um, item. K, and then, um, on the. Uh, page, page two of the sub-agreements and page two of the commercial. The commercial, I don't know, commercial part.
Okay.
We can take a motion.
But we can take a motion and then questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
For clarification, what items besides K is, uh, member Perry talking about, or is it just K?
Um, just item K, but then I have two other questions, um, that have to do with the payroll, the, the pay warrants.
So that's item F?
For payroll? On payroll?
Is. Yes. Uh, G, item G.
You have questions on warrants? Okay.
Okay, so on K and G.
So I move approval of A through E and, uh.
She's not asking to pull them. She's such a question. So we're just gonna have, put the motion, we're gonna put the motion on the floor. Um, so is that? Remember Kelly?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Awesome. Okay, what are your questions, member Perry, on, um?
So, um, for the Living Fit Nation, it's a little over seven, seventy-three thousand dollars. I'm assuming that is once a year, not. Is that right? That's page. Or.
Oh, I can respond to that, number Perry. Living Fit Nation is our company that's coming on and doing the COVID nineteen testing for us. So it'll be ongoing depending on the number of tests that are, uh, uh, conducted. Now, these costs are for the student testing specifically, because the staff testing is billed back to the employees' insurance. Should they have it? So it'd be minimal for staff.
So is it about seventy-three thousand dollars a month?
Per, it depends on the number of tests, uh, done, um, and the frequency of those tests. So the last test round, that's the cost of the test that we're putting out there.
I was, I was just kind of looking for an average. Um, and then, um, I noticed that there are a lot of launchpad therapy, sub-agreements. Can you, could you just kind of tell me why those aren't all together? That's also page two.
Um, they're gonna be for different students, I believe. I don't know for, for sure, just looking at the, the date. But, um. It's gonna be for different services or different, uh, people served.
Okay, so they're all launchpad therapy, but.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, for K, the art masters. It was just curious that now, um, I, I thought that Ms. Cam- Kamis Stevens was the liaison for El Moro. And that, um, Sarah was the one for Top of the World, but it says that Kam is for both.
It's like Dr. Allman is looking for the answer.
Yeah, I, I would have been able to follow up on this specifically if I had known in advance that was your question. I, I can't answer that question necessarily off the top of my head. Um.
Well, I read in the last, yeah, at, at the last board meeting, we gave stipends to Sarah Woolsey and Kam for, um, kind of coordinating the arts at the school. And so I didn't know if that was part of it or if Kam is doing it at both schools or I.
My understanding is Kam is doing Art Masters and Sarah Woolsey is doing, uh, Lamb.
Okay.
Jeff, for the testing, is that being reimbursed by the federal government? No, not by the, we did, you can't use some of your stimulus funds for that, which you'll see in the later report. Um, but what we're gonna be switching it to, it's actually getting insurance. And having Living Fit Nation build back insurance for everyone tested is kind of the next step for us. Thank you.
Okay, everyone good? Right, okay, so you want me to, okay. Um, before I can please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote.
Yes. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman.
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. And that will move us to number, um, eleven. Eleven A, if we move that forward. So we're gonna move to eleven A and that, hang on, let me get to my notes. I am pretty sure that this is. Oh, actually, any public comment? Sorry. Mr. Allman, is there any public comment? Um, anyone wishing to speak to COVID nineteen, twenty, twenty dash, twenty twenty-one school year update? Secondary reopening and planning update for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tonight?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, and I just want to make a note as member of Vickers's point out. Is there someone coming? Okay.
Hands just raised.
Okay.
Sherry Morgan, you can unmute.
Thank you. Um, I think it's a wonderful courtesy that nobody is, um, commenting. They're waiting with bated breath, I'm sure, to understand what's coming. Um, Mr. Allman, I have a question. Dr. Allman, I have a question on whether or not your presentation will be online. Um, so that people can access it later, if you still here, here with us. No, okay. Okay, well, I thought it was funny that he said he was standing on that corner because where I'm at, it's dark, so I was questioning that background. Anyway, um, I appreciate Dr. Allman's report and I am happy to see that the information showed a lot of positive results for this year. Um, as for my comment, I'm gonna follow up on his statement that we are somewhat pointing out the obvious. Um, in certain circumstances, uh, there's been quite a bit of activity on social media this week. And many families feel the district is doing well and specifically that their elementary kid is doing great, that the elementary rollout was awesome. And as a fourteen-year parent in the elementary schools, uh, I love hearing that. Um, I know that elementary is a wonderful special place. And, um, you know, once they hit middle school, hormones kick in and then you got middle school and high school to boot. So it's a really wild time. Um. I, the, many people that were out there also indicated that they felt they had a positive perspective on the district and that they see the glass is half, half-full. This is a very common analogy and many of you may not believe it, but one that I do think is a better way to look at things. However, while I do agree that the glass is half-full in many situations. Um, I was very quick in the spring to, um, celebrate the swiftness of our district that we got everybody online so fast. Um, it is important that as a community and as a district, we listen and support the voices that elected you all on the board. And that fund eighty-eight percent of this district's budget. Asking for accountability is not a far-out request. Asking for evidence that we are truly ready is not a far-out request. Teachers have been mentioning to students that they aren't completing curriculum. Parents are concerned. Um, we have on the budget, teachers being paid for twenty hours of AP. We have on the budget, teachers being paid for twenty hours of AP support, which is great. But acknowledging that shows accountability, that maybe we're not quite, you know, maybe the trimester, while some think it's good, there is learning loss. That's why you're offering that. So calling it what it is, I think, would gain a lot more restock than kind of pushing it under the rug and hoping people understand that one is related to the other. You know, there are parents that are very concerned about their students' mental health and how they're faring and stating that those that need that support the most aren't gonna access the services. And while many extend the courtesy to the district that they do their best, and I continue to applaud the effort that the teachers and staff are doing, it is important to remember that mental health and the stigma around it has not yet gone away. So assuming that because we put out digital information that people are tapping into, it's not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, for taking the time. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
There is a second hand. Katie Singer, you can unmute.
Hi, I just have a quick question. I have a senior and an eighth grader. And I just want to recognize some of the teachers that have done an incredible job. My daughter has Mr. Todd and Honeycutt right now, and those are probably the most incredible teachers to be teaching virtually. I admire their energy. I work from home and listen to them quite often and I just want to commend that. But I wanted to see, I don't know if you guys can address questions, but I, I'm wondering for my eighth grader, as he enters into high school, do we have a plan to do, I guess what you're calling kind of a bridge for AP students? Do we have a bridge plan or a review plan for eighth graders going into high school that may have taken maybe language arts the first trimester and they, you know, haven't had language arts since November of the prior year? Or if they had math in the first trimester, what is our plan? Because my, my only concern is, I don't want my kid, you know, to be competing with other kids in other districts and not have the same opportunities. So what's our plan for our kids to get them back up to speed on any learning loss that they may have experienced?
We can't answer questions. To answer your question, we can't answer questions like this. What we could do is refer staff to get back with you or for you to reach out to Dr. Alman, reach out to the site's principals with your question.
Maybe it's something that you guys can address at your next board meeting. Maybe we put it on.
We'll address it tonight. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
I don't know what's on your, what's actually in your presentations. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this topic?
There are no more hands at this time. Oh, I apologize, there is a hand. Leslie Briggs, you may speak.
Okay, my question is, it was great to hear the AP results as being so high. But my question is, those tests were given during a time where there were no gaps in subject matter? Because they were not on the trimester system. Is that correct?
This isn't, this isn't a time where we have discussion back and forth. There is gonna be a presentation. And if your question's not answered within that, you can reach out to the site principal.
Okay, well, you just asked if there are any more questions and that's a valid question.
No public comment. This is public comment on COVID-19 twenty twenty-one school year update.
This is a question regarding Dr. Alaman's presentation.
No, I was asking the board members if they had questions on that, but your question will be answered in the presentation that's coming up. There's a presentation coming up. We're going to discuss COVID-19 twenty twenty-one school year update, secondary.
No, I was asking, I was asking about whether or not those AP test results were based on a full year system or a trimester system. And I think I know the answer to that. It is not about COVID-19.
We can, we can ask Dr. Alman to get back with you to answer that question. This, this is a, isn't a town hall. It's just public comment. So you can make comment about the topic that we're about to discuss.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
See ya.
And Carol, this is by law that we, we can't do this.
Yes.
I think it's important that the public know that we're not trying to evade what they're, what they're asking. It's what we're not allowed to do.
That is correct. Thank you. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone else that's wishing to speak and make a public, public comment on this topic?
There are no more hands.
Thank you very much. And with that, Dr. Valerio, the floor is yours for the presentation.
Thank you, board, staff. We have quite a few folks here that are gonna be taking part in this presentation. We are hopeful that it'll answer a lot of questions that are, that we've heard from the community. But obviously, if not, happy to do our best to answer the questions with the information we have to date. And obviously, we recognize there's a lot of moving parts as we look forward to summer and next fall that we're not sure of the requirements and the expectations from the Department of Public Health. But we'll do our best to give you a general idea of where we're headed. So, next slide. And I want to point out, this is just an example of, you know, some of the work going on at our school sites. We have been doing lunch deliveries. I think Clerk Osborne had a chance to see how the process works at our lunchtime today during our visit at Elmoreo. Every, it's all hands on deck at the district, trying to ensure a safe and environment for our elementary students, our secondary students that are currently on campus, which is our small learning centers. You'll hear more about that tonight. But I just want to extend a lot of gratitude out to all of our teaching staffs and classified staff for all their work they've been doing this year. It has been a significant amount just to continue to keep the doors open and keep our students moving forward. So I appreciate all their work. So tonight, we're gonna break it up similar to how we've done it in the past, where we do logistics update, talk about expenditures, some of the technology. Obviously, this is a non-comprehensive list. It's just a general update. COVID testing and our future plans for COVID testing. A brief reminder of where we're at in terms of reopening at the secondary level. And then we'll do a COVID instructional team update that will have a discussion of some of the learning outcomes to date, student supports that we have in place, an update on our learning center and special education work, what we know right now for the rest of spring and into summer planning, and wrap it up with a little bit of what our plans are, our areas of focus for fall of twenty twenty-one.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Valeria. This will give you a picture of the stimulus money that we received as a result of the CARES Act that was passed in a law of March of twenty twenty. You can see the general categories that that money's been spent. Based on the stimulus amount, we were allocated about 1.4 million, which to date, we've received and spent about 1.1 million of it. What's important here, and I will get into a little more of the specific expenditures in a later slide, is that the bulk of this money had to be spent by December thirtieth of twenty twenty. So it was really the federal government's way of saying, we're gonna help you respond to this pandemic. They understood the crisis that was ahead of us with the school closures and all the uncertainty that we were facing, just to make sure we could finish the year and then look to start planning for the fall. Next slide. Some examples of the expenditures that were included are listed on this. I won't read all of them. But really, that CARES Act provided for the coordination of our preparedness and response. Planning and coordination for long-term closures was included. Of course, the purchasing of supplies to sanitize and clean our facilities. And then the interesting is the last bullet, the other activities necessary to maintain the operation and employment of their existing staff. So if you recall, when the initial budget outlook came for the state of California, it was very negative. And there was a fear that there could be up to a negative ten percent cost of living adjustment or COLA. So one of the uses of the funds that was put out there was to mitigate the potential layoffs that would occur. And so that's why that's on there. Although we have not used the funds for that, I just thought it'd be important to bring back what we are looking at and the uncertainty that we're facing at that time. Next slide. Other examples included providing additional academic supports and assessments, mental health supports and assessments, and professional development for teachers and, and parents to support students with distance learning. Next slide. So getting into a little more of the specific expenditures that we, we use this, this funding for. And I should have said at the beginning, but as a reminder, there's been a lot of talk of additional stimulus money and we're even gonna talk about that later in the presentation. But to date, the stimulus passed back in March twenty twenty is the only funding we've received in terms of additional dollars to support our COVID-19 response. So all the other funding, including the, the additional stimulus approved back in December of twenty twenty, although that one has been approved and although there's not yet, there's still for debate and negotiation, we haven't received that money yet and that's to the tune of about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But in terms of our logistics, we procured permanent portable plexiglass partitions, reconfigured all classrooms, provided signage to support our safe social distancing, upgraded all of our air filters. We've procured temps and temporary kiosks to, for dedicated entry points. Those are the temperature kiosks that you've seen in previous presentations and ensured that we have enough personal protective equipment for both students and staff, all of which should be pointed out was in place and ready in the fall. And that's for all of our school sites. And it was actually something we discussed at our reopening of school plan that was presented to the board on July twenty seventh. So all of these categories that we spent the money, we were ready to go. We just weren't allowed to necessarily return or reopen in person yet.
Jeff, was, you, you have these portable trailers that you've stored all the extra furniture in? Was, was any of that taken care of by this money or did we have to pay that out of the, the district funds?
Yeah, that was part of the temporary facilities category.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course. Good question. Thank you. Next slide, please. So in addition to the CARES Act fund that we just discussed, there's been significant investment by our district's general fund. Of course, you can see, and I won't read it, but there's been a lot of new staffing. And thanks to Mike Conlon and his team, there's a lot of hiring, a lot of frantic hiring that took place over the summer to get ready. There's been a lot of devices and additional technology that's been ongoing. We've learned as we've gone through the pandemic of additional technology needs that we've been able to support with the general fund dollars that we've had aside. In addition, we wanna, we have our ongoing professional development opportunities for teachers, for curriculum development. And then, of course, the increase in our routine maintenance costs to support all these additional devices and equipment that we're using today. These expenditures go across all school sites to support both in-person and distance learning. And I think that's an important point. And the amount, when you add up all these expenditures outside of the CARES Act funding that we've received to date, add up to about 2.6 million of our general fund dollars that we've gone to support the response to this pandemic. So with that, I turn it over to Mike Conlon to discuss testing.
Thank you, Jeff. So as you know, we've been offering staff COVID testing from, starting in, in early September. So between September and today, we've had seven testing opportunities with nine hundred eight tests administered. And again, we worded it that way to let you know that it's a lot of, you know, the same staff being tested over and over. But of, so it's not, you know, nine hundred, we don't have nine hundred and eight employees. But so, yeah, again, nine hundred and eight tests administered. Then we did have, with that, we did have five positives. And as you know, we do have our upcoming on the Monday after we return from midwinter break, we have another round of, of testing for, for staff. And we're also bringing back student testing on that Tuesday, the twenty-third. And as you can see as well, we've had four testing opportunities for students with over almost twelve hundred tests administered. Quite a few more, more positives found in those, in those tests. But the one thing to, to notice, like, looking, looking forward, our plan is to continue to offer staff and student testing approximately every two weeks. I'm in the process of calendaring those, those testing opportunities now. And again, we'll have them kind of staggered out about every two weeks. And we are starting with the, the twenty-third of February, just like we do with staff, where staff can submit their insurance information. We're gonna have students submit their insurance information and it'll get billed on the backend directly to insurance at zero cost to, to the, to the insured. And if you do not have insurance, they're, they're gonna get reimbursed, be zero out of pocket. It'll get reimbursed through the CARES Act. So again, now that'll be what we move, the process we, we use moving forward. Like I said, for the first three or four, four testing opportunities, we were paying out of pocket for every single test, about a hundred and forty dollars per student test. But we are shifting now that there's a, an increase in frequency, we are looking to kind of shift to that, to that insurance model for both staff and students. And like I said, we'll have them scheduled for about every two weeks through the remainder of the, probably, probably the remainder of the school year.
So this, this slide represents a lot of work of our staff and our students and our teachers. And I wanted to highlight a few of the, the things that we've been working on with technology. We have three hundred and ten licenses for Zoom. Those licenses are also for substitutes because they need licenses, too. So we've been using, we've trained teachers how to use Zoom and we've been using that since the spring. We've purchased and trained teachers in grades six through twelve on, on the use of new technology to support hybrid learning models when they, when students come back. Teachers are ready to do that. They've been trained. And these models will help them kind of get better angles on their, on their learning and their teaching so that students can see things better from home, when they're at home. And those, those, those are, that's a challenging project because teachers become kind of a producer, like a TV producer. So it's, it's really a, a good thing that we've got them all trained and ready to go. We worked with instructors to procure and, and train and, and select a lot of learning software that has to do with like the actual class. So Apex and, and Savas offer curriculum. And then we have ALVS and UC Scout for AP classes and language classes. And so those were really important tools for our virtual academy, but also for many of our other students also take classes through those tools as well. I think Jason A. did, Jason Alman did a great job, Dr. Alman, with explaining what we did with Canvas. So I'm not gonna go too far into that, but we did offer a lot of training that was recorded in the spring and in the summer and one-to-one sessions or small group sessions almost every day in the fall for our teachers that needed help just in time. We also identified students that needed access points because their connections at home weren't either good enough or they didn't have any. So we procured and showed the students how to use eighty-one access points and they're in use right now. So that's, those are just some of the things. It's not a comprehensive list, but those are just a few of the items that we've been working on with technology. We have a great team that's helping do that.
Just kind of wrapping up as we finish up the logistics, as this is part of the logistics piece. Again, we're currently waiting for Orange County to return to the red tier. And this has been one of the big changes more recently with the consolidated guidance from the Department of Public Health that came out earlier in January, that originally we were going to have to be in the red tier for fourteen days. That's been reduced to five days. So we are waiting for that to happen and obviously, it's an important piece for us to get adjusted case rates. Testing positivity needs to drop as well as there's an equity. there's an equity component that also needs to be met. So we are closely watching those. As member Osram pointed out, it's one of those things that I go on every day to see the case counts as they come in. The tiers are assigned by the Department of Public Health on Tuesdays. And as soon as we re-enter red tier, we'll have five days, and then we will be permitted to reopen our school sites' secondaries. We've had to post a plan to our website. It's on the district website. Thanks to the team for putting that together. And we, again, have been prepared with the PPE, the air filtration. Those things have been ready and installed. So we are ready as soon as we're able to bring students back on the campus, we will. And any changes that are made by the Department of Public Health between now and that point in time will keep everybody apprised. But that's our current status as of today. In terms of the instructional team update, again, talking about learning outcomes, attendance and engagement, grade distributions and reading scores. Talk about some student supports, the learning center, and we'll wrap up with the the planning from spring to fall.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. So yeah, myself, Dr. Keller, Mrs. White, we'll all be kind of talking through these different parts on the instructional services side, our current team. This first set of data is our daily attendance rate in our most, in one of our recent reporting terms. If we've really monitoring this one, this set of data since last spring, if you if you remember districts were back then, we're really focusing on connectivity and devices. And in some cases, searching for students that we lost contact with, right? And this was really important for us then, and we've continued to monitor it. You notice this, this here, it's actually up a little bit, but it is measuring two different things between now and the last two years. The last two years was just are the on-campus and class. This is measuring whether they're on-campus and class or potentially checking in online, right? So it's not measuring the level of engagement, but it does tell us that students are checking in each day or at this rate. That's the average rate. So we do follow this closely to see that kids are checking in. And really, a lot of the having these numbers where they're at is a part of being able to get them devices and that connectivity piece and the teacher and counseling staff outreach. If you go to the next slide. This slide here looks at grade distribution of our students in the new trimester academic program. This data was important to us in kind of finding and supporting specific courses that students were struggling in in this new model, right? But this is, this is the average for both of our middle and high schools. For where the blue is actually the mid-trimester, and then the red is the final trimester average grades in those classes. And if you, you know, if you're, you know, looking at the news media, you'll often hear them talk about, you know, the number of Ds and Fs, and that kids are struggling. So, you know, we'll look, we look at this, our rates or our grade distributions are similar to what they've been in the past, and you'll see a little bit of uptick after the trimester, the progress report in the middle. And As and Bs, a little bit of decrease in Ds and Fs, but it was a little for our teams that was really analyzing this, it was different this year because we really had to look at specific courses that were in a different setting and a different way of learning. So we were really, really digging deep into this set of data. Go to the next slide. We take the same grade grade distributions, and you're really looking at each of those columns are the previous six terms. So last year's as well as looking back even the year before that. And so you'll see it's fairly stable, consistent distribution of grades, a little bit of drop in As at the middle school and a little bit of increase of As at the high school. So it shows that there's consistency with prior years, but obviously, we recognize that there's been, you know, some really difficult adjustments made to the teaching learning experience, right? Was this this year, and it's been very challenging for many of our students. So that's why we are continuing to look at this information and really drilling down deeper to help improve and expand our interventions so we can meet those the students' needs, whether it's academically or socially emotionally with for all the in all the classes that they're taking this year. Go to the next slide. Two slides, we're going to look at elementary a little bit. One of the key sets of data that we look at the elementary is their reading ability, literacy, such an important skill and work that teachers and students are doing at this level. This is referenced earlier tonight, IREDDI is one of the measurements that we use to measure reading level, in this case, Lexa level. These are the average Lexa levels for students last year compared to this year. So if you're reading left to right, you have the Kinders where they were at trimester two last year. And then we didn't, we didn't do this assessment in the spring when schools closed. And then now as first graders, what's their average Lexa score? And the trimester one, and then again trimester two, which was, you know, probably given maybe a month ago. So general growth, the same group of students and reading ability, which is good. But you'll see, you know, you can see that a little bit of a dip there of the kindergartners. When we know that that's such a critical age for foundational reading, right? Whether it's phonics or looking at phonetic awareness, like, it's a really critical a critical age where that part is built that really lasts for a long time. So you did, we did see a dip going from kindergarten to first grade with those students. But now, as are with our teachers, and they're adjusting to the, you know, to those needs, there was an increase there from trimester one to trimester two. And as you look at the older kids, a little bit more of a steady growth from term to term, and we've given this. And and we will give this again in the spring to see where we're at heading into the summer. Go to the next slide. We take this, take that data. And then we kind of put it in in comparison to where they are at the grade level. So that green, the green number at the bottom or tier one are the students that are at or above grade level based on the reading ability. This is for all elementary students. We certainly take the time to break this down much more detail to provide different interventions or or shift instruction. And the yellow one in the middle is at or near grade level. And then the red one is obviously a very big concern. Those are students that are at least one grade level below where they're at right now. So there's, if you look at the the scores across the last four reporting trimesters, you'll see a little definitely a little bit of variability as it goes up and down. One good thing to see from trimester one to trimester two is some of those in the tier two and tier three are, those are getting a little bit smaller, right? And that's our goal at the end of the year is that we skip them in the fall. We want to continue to make those the yellow and red tier, this group of students that are, you know, near grade level, maybe below grade level, how do we make, get those, give those students a, you know, scoop of extra intervention? Whether that's in the class or or after school, give them more intervention to get them closer to grade level or beyond grade level. If you go to the next slide, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Keller to talk about social emotional support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mayberry and world Board of Education. Nice to see you this evening. I, first of all, want to absolutely acknowledge what we've been hearing over the past several months, and if not 10 months. And and I think Dr. Alman acknowledged it really nicely that it is such a stressful and difficult time with isolation for for our students. And certainly that has great impacts on student mental health, staff stress, parent stress. And that is real. And, you know, we're fortunate and they're going to be unified to have a real incredible team of counselors and school psychologists and student support specialists who are available to to be an ear for for parents or students and also are who are skilled interventionists to be able to help stabilize and address concerns. So on this, on this chart here, we have our list of seven school counselors. We have one at each of our elementary schools. We have a school psychologist at each of our elementary schools. At the middle school, we have two stu- two school counselors and a school psychologist and a student support specialist who's a licensed clinical social worker. And at the high school, three school counselors who serve an alpha. And then, of course, school psychologists and a student support specialist also provide lots of support. So we also have a school psychologist on special assignment at the district level. Of course, parents, please feel free to reach out to me if you're a student or or you need some resources or connection to support. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me or my colleague, Mrs. White, and we can get you connected. Next slide, please. In the world of student support services this year, just to provide you a mid-year update, our our team of professionals has been very busy. We've had over 3,500 student-level contacts and parent contacts, contacts with individuals outside. We do a lot of case coordination with private, private providers to ensure that the academic learning doesn't stop with students who are struggling. We've had seven suicide threat assessments conducted in the current school year. I mean, that's the most extreme level of support that we provide, and all of our staff members are trained and and capable of providing that level of support. We use universal screeners regularly and and a lot of variety of different screening instruments, including Kelvin education. We administer the co-vitality survey at the secondary level, actually, fourth through 12th grade, that measures student strengths in areas of distress and life satisfaction. And that helps us to identify students who might need immediate follow-up. We also administer a universal screening at the K through three level that measures student externalizing and internalizing risk. And we just completed that round, and and staff will be following up with students and families who have been flagged. All the social emotional work really is, it's a, it's a collaborative effort, not only internally, but it's it's with our external partners. And and some of the work is shaped by, we've already heard about challenge success from our student board representative and and Dr. Alman speaking about it, but it really helps us to help to prioritize student health, balance and well-being. We have a great partnership with Providence St. Joseph and Marcy Mednick and the Community Coalition and and team. And they help us to support alcohol and drug abuse prevention in the district and their Strengths and Numbers campaign. Of course, I have to acknowledge our partnership with PGA Coffee Talk, who helps us put on community education events. We have one coming up where we're screening the film Screenagers, part one and part two after midwinter break, and having a panel discussion to to help families make healthy decisions around device usage. Now, more than ever, that's critically important, the social impacts of social media on mental health. And and of course, our enduring support from our school power team and and ensuring that they continue to prioritize student learning and mental health. So can we turn it on to the next slide, please? And then I also have really fortunate this year to be working with the health and nursing services team as their administrative lead. And Mike Conlin and I interface regularly with our two incredible nurses, Pam Madge, and we brought on Nurse Kelly Schultz in the spring of last year. So we have two credentialed nurses serving all four school sites in our preschool readiness program. And we have a great team of health clerks serving all four of our school sites. And not only are they doing the day-to-day health, health office operational pieces in terms of ensuring that students have immunizations completed, ensuring that that any minor injury or or major injury is addressed in a timely manner and a healthy manner. They also have been instrumental with our work around COVID-19 prevention and support. And so they've been critically important for helping us set up our care centers at each of our school sites. They ensure that our our protective equipment is inventoried on a weekly basis and ensure that all of our, all of our inventory is is provided and ready to go. They ensure that student health screenings are completed on a regular basis. They also provide a lot of reassurance and support with families when they're, they have a COVID-related incident. So I appreciate their daily work. And and one of the most important pieces that our nursing team does is contact tracing. And if you turn it to the next slide. This is a snapshot from a few days ago of our district's dashboard. There'll be a link that will go to this, and I would encourage community members to to check back regularly. We update this on regular school days. So this is an ongoing count of our active student and staff COVID cases, our cumulative cases to date. And then our total counts of student or staff members in quarantine. So I want to separate the isolation piece, which is an active case, from students or staff who may be in quarantine. And this is a really a seven-day-a-week job, our nursing team, Mike Conlin and myself. We are in constant communication, talking about known or active cases. Certainly, I want to continue to encourage families to report either close contact exposure or active cases that their students or families might be experiencing so we can help work with the Orange County Healthcare Agency's School Response Team on proper next steps. So and I would like now to turn it over to my colleague. This is Irene White, the Director of Special Education.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Keller. So as it relates to special education, what are we doing? There's a lot of great work going on, and I'm certainly pleased to report that back in March, we rolled out very early with our services. And we've been continuing to try to provide high-quality care and support to our students. So we are at this time able to fully implement our IEP-related services, which include speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, APE counseling and behavior services. And and that is regardless of of whether the child is attending virtually in our, one of our virtual programs at any one of our levels, or whether they're attending in the hybrid option. So we we definitely have staff seeing kids in person. We also have staff conducting sessions virtually. So we're doing a kind of a mixed bag based on the the parent's choice for that their particular child. Our SAI, it stands for specialized academic instruction, is also being implemented consistent with student IEPs. We currently have as of today 312 children that are receiving special education services. We are continuing to implement individual transition plans for all of our students ages 16 and above. That is a required component. Their services look a little bit different because we're not able to put them in work experience types of settings at this time. So we're doing as much as we can virtually. We, this year, clearly is an outcome of this pandemic, we have been putting emergency condition plans in place for all of our students. And that particular plan helps us and helps parents understand what their child will receive if their child has to self-quarantine or if school is not in session. So it has three, three different. Actually, there's three different plans in that emergency condition plan based on what what is happening. So as you know, we've had to self-quarantine groups of kids, including our preschool program most recently. And this particular plan highlighted for the parents prior to them going out what services their children were going to receive. We have been able to conduct, I'm very pleased about this, able to conduct, for the most part, timely initial assessments. When I say for the most part, we've had several parents who, even though they either made a request for an initial special education assessment, they've chosen to not have their child come in for a variety of reasons. So we've delayed those assessments. But for the most part, they are getting done. Since the beginning of this school year, we've conducted 33 initial assessments. And where we're seeing an uptick is at the high school level. We're seeing a greater number of initial assessment requests at that level than than we've seen in prior years. The other, the other sites are pretty consistent with what we've seen previously. We continue to hold timely IEP meetings. All of those are happening clearly virtually. And I have to say this, that of one of all the practices that we've learned, I I think we see that holding IEPs virtually is actually more productive and a more efficient use of everybody's time. So that may be a practice that 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 we move forward with, even when we're able to return to school. Certainly, if the parents want to move in that direction. Next slide, please. We are actively responding to parent concerns. And we are moving into IEPs as swiftly as we possibly can get them scheduled in an effort to address any particular child who is struggling. We've completed our triannual assessments on time, and since the start, we've, we've conducted 59. And I also identified the number of summer assessments that we completed. And honestly, I am so grateful to my team as well as the board who allowed us to open assessments over the summer. We did complete 92, and that really positioned us well for the start of this school year. We've, we are pretty much caught up. The high school is still still working on that, but we're close. But we're going to be ending the school year feeling pretty strong as it relates to our assessment, which is really important. Because as you know, that assessment is the basis for developing IEPs for our students. Because as you know, that assessment is the basis for developing IEPs for our students. We're pushing in IA support at the elementary level based on IA needs. Virtual support with instructional aids at the middle school and high school levels. We have some of our IAs, I'll be talking about the learning center in a moment, but we have several of our IAs that are coming in. If the student that they work with is in person, the instructional assistant at the middle school and high school has been requested to also be in person. We're mentoring three school psychologist interns this school year, which has been super helpful for extra hands-on deck. And we are providing transportation on a limited basis for those kids that need access to the learning center of both the middle school and high school. Next slide, please. So what's coming this spring? So we still have lots we want to accomplish. We're obviously in transition planning mode and in summer school planning mode. But in addition to that, we are going to be offering a parent training in the month, month of March. Our speaker is going to be Natalie Finn. She is a former school psychologist and an MFT. And we have a series of three workshops that we'll be offering our families. And we'll, I'll be working with Dr. Keller to potentially include our children on section 504 plans as well. We're not going to turn away anybody. We're going to continue to engage our parents of early learners and parent webinars. Because we weren't able to offer the learning link this year, we've really focused on webinars. We've hosted eight of them to date. And our parent participation is anywhere from 20 to 30 parents. Thank you, Dee, for commenting on the presentation that you participated in last night with Grace and Sandy. We have seven more planned for the balance of the school year. We're also going to be hosting a provider webinar on February 22nd. And we're excited about getting all of our speakers in place for that. And last but not least, we're working on recruiting additional parent mentors at this time. And I'll be conducting a training later this spring. And what, what's happened with our parent mentors, they're, they're definitely active, alive and well, and giving a lot of input in terms of what they're seeing from our community. We've had several parent mentors whose kids have aged out. So it's time again to recruit some additional folks. And now I'd like to share a little bit about our learning center because we're super proud of that and we're certainly thrilled that we're able to offer it for students. But before I do that, outside of elementary school, I wanted to just make sure everybody's aware that our preschool program is open five days a week. And we are not running a nine to two session, but rather a nine to 12, which their afternoon time is, is happening virtually with our, with Lana Kirkie, as well as her instructional aid team. We have our self-contained middle school class that is in person. And they are Monday through Thursday, as well as our self-contained high school classroom. This has been just a tremendous support to our students that are the most vulnerable. And we're really struggling with the virtual learning. And you know, I'll be honest with you, I have spoken to many of the parents of, of the children in those classes. And they are so grateful that their kids are able to come. And what we're seeing as we're holding annual IEPs is that our kids are meeting their goals. Unlike what we might have anticipated, that they're, that they're actually making some really nice progress and meeting their goals that we intended them to meet. Our learning center is open Monday through Friday at both the middle school and as well as the high school. And we currently have children represented in, in all categories. We have children that are special education eligible. We have a handful of 504 kids and we also have children that are English learners. And we are now beginning to add some general education kids that are bubbling up at, at both of those levels and including their, their, and including, including them in the center. At the middle school, we average about 14 kids a day. And at the high school, we average about 10 to 12. And we have seven staff. It's a, it's a very highly supported learning environment and our kids are thriving. And how do we know that? One, their social, their affect has improved, their grades are improving and their attendance is improving. What is not captured here in the numbers is the actual number of kids that have attended the learning center since we opened just prior to the second trimester. So it was just, I think, at the two weeks, two weeks before the first trimester ended. On average, well, the middle school, we've invited and had up to 30 different children participate. And at the high school level, approximately 25. It's a moving target. So as kids make gains and as they, they get back into control about what the expectations are, we, we have the ability to fade them out of the learning center and bring in other children that need it. We have some kids, in fact, I just conducted a 30-day review on a kiddo who came from a very restrictive program. And I would have thought he would be, because he's doing great, his grades are great. I would have thought he said, he would say, I don't want to be in the learning center. He was the first one that said, this is a program that I really thrive in. I'm a social kid, I need to be here. So he was self-advocating for himself. So we are feeling very good about this opportunity for our children. And we believe that as we continue to navigate the school year, it's an intervention that even at the time, at the point at which middle school and high school kids return, we feel like we want to leave the learning center open and available for those kids that need to be on campus five days a week. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over back to chat.
Thank you. So we're going to shift these last couple of slides, just looking forward a little bit. The slide here, a couple of key things coming up here this spring. So for the top there really takes, gives an update to the board on where we're at regards to should the middle and high school, should we be able to return per the CDPH? And so the middle school, right where there's much more simple master schedule, students are, will be able to come in and they're stable cohorts. At the high school where there's obviously much more complicated master schedule, where you might have, you know, eight students that are in AP French, of which three are in music and five are in calculus. You know, it's a little bit, much, much more complex and to keep those stable cohort cohorts. So it's approximately about 90, a little bit over 90% of the students come back. And then we're, those last five to 10% of students, their high school has, is working on, you know, unique or has set up unique personalized solutions for those scheduling challenges. So that might be something like increased spacing in the class, right? Taking two cohorts and spreading them out in the same facility, right? Whether that would be, you know, library or a classroom or the gym, but finding a space where you could have potentially two cohorts in there so that the kids can be, all be on campus. And then at the bottom, Dr. Allman talked about this a little bit earlier, so I won't spend much time on it. But all the students that are AP classes, whether they would, whatever trimester they took it in, or if they're in virtual academy, will be invited to the LBHS Canvas AP course pages that the teachers are building out and have been building out. That will have study and prep session times, office hours. The college board links to some of the work they're doing. The college board is doing tutorial sessions as well, live and small group ones, similar to what our staff is doing that Dr. Allman talked about earlier and all their resources. So really, you know, setting it up as they would any other year, right? For their kids, but you know, they're coming from different settings. So just being very thoughtful of where kids are at in their courses that are getting these, this such support as they prepare for the AP exam in May or maybe even late May. And then I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Keller to talk about the summer.
Thank you, Chad. All right. So thank you very much. We look at summer learning as a really important extension of the services we provide to students. And this year, you know, summer 2021, absolutely a critical component of our, of our school year program. And historically, on the left-hand side, this is, this is a snapshot of how we have evolved our summer school program to be a very targeted intervention for skill deficits based on teacher referral. We provide, just to think about the full continuum of preschool through 12th grade special education programs. There is what's called the ESY, Extended School Year, provided for students who, through their IEP, would be assigned to a special, special education program over the summer or potentially a general education intervention, where they would be working on skills to ensure that they maintain their skills. But when we, and when we talk about general education and grades one through, one through eight and nine through 12, nine through 12, we're offering students who are English language learners, we're offering English language development support. When we focus on academic skill development, we're really focusing on, at the, at the grade one through three level, a heavy emphasis on reading skills. We know that that's critically important to open up learning at all levels of education. And fourth through sixth grade, there's depending on teacher referral and the data that's collected all year, a student might be referred for reading intervention or math intervention or potentially both. And at the, in the middle school level, students, we prioritized math intervention because we thought, we've learned from our data that that is really the area that they need the most support in to be prepared for the next school year. This past year, we were all virtual. We shifted from a four-hour day model at the grade one through eight level to very intensive small group instruction. In the previous year, we had up to 20 students in a classroom with one teacher, maybe an instructional assistant in there. We switched to a, one teacher to five students for an intensive 45-minute block, really. And it was virtual and it really helped students to get that individualized attention. And we saw really, really strong gains with our student learning in a 20, 20-day intervention. This year, our goal is to have students on campus as much as possible. And we, through our thought exchange with our parents that participated in our thought exchange from February 3rd through the 9th, that we, we share that goal. We want students in person if possible. We also will be offering virtual options for students that might not want to have, parents not want to have their student back on campus. We're going to continue to prioritize all the things that I just mentioned. And of course, the refresher piece is really important. And that's not only at the grade one through eight level, us future grade one through eight. That's when, when I say grade one through eight, I'm talking about current kindergartners through, through seventh grade. And then for eighth graders, we, we absolutely have to be looking at refresher type programs to ensure that there's some, some academic readiness for the transition and acclimation to high school. So that's definitely on our, our consideration list. High school is typically designed around a credit recovery model. So a student who's earned a, who's earned a D or an F in a, in a grade, they have an opportunity to recover that credit at the grade of C or above. We have historically run 10-day semester courses that they've already participated in this trimester or a semester of the course. And now they're trying to recover the credit using Apex curriculum. So we'll continue to offer that credit recovery component and will also offer bridge classes. That is offered when we, when a student is interested in potentially going to an honors class from, from a college prep level class. Some teachers might offer a non-credit bridge class. And then of course, the refresher piece will be really important. And lastly, we have for the last three years, offered a dual enrollment course through Irvine Valley College. Last year was psych, psychology. This year it's social psychology, so we'll be continuing to offer great programs. So calendar-wise, we want to, we've, we're exploring a variety of different options. High school needs to be as close to the close of the regular school year, similar to previous years, because transcripts for either graduation or other pieces need to be closed out. So that's the why on, on why we, we put high school, summer school closer to the close of the regular school year. We really, we made an important shift with grade one through eight summer school to a jumpstart model. So we actually had five weeks of vacation right after the close of the regular school year. And then ran our 20-day program almost up to the start of the beginning of the school year, or when teachers returned in August. We think that's a really effective model because students will have a very small vacation gap before they come back and start the regular school year. So lots of exciting options coming ahead. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dixon, who's going to talk about finances.
Thank you, Dr. Keller.
Related to summer school.
All right. So we had spoken earlier in the fiscal reporting on the COVID about what has been approved in terms of the CARES Act and then potential future stimulus funds or grants available by the state and federal government. The expanded learning time grant proposal is just that. It's a proposal that's being worked through the legislature, still being negotiated with the governor. But as it's currently written, could potentially provide our school district $1.7 million. And it had four broad categories that had addressed the extended learning time, professional development, programs to address social emotional learning and access to school meals. Now, again, while this is still being negotiated, it could be somewhat promising as, not that we would need anything to enhance and improve a summer school program, but these would provide additional resources that could extend from summer school and beyond to support our district as we continue to push and respond to the pandemic with whatever dollars we have available. So we wanted to bring this up because as written, it looks like something that is really targeted for a summer school or a gap learning closure opportunity that the governor had intended. And as they work through it, we'll bring that information back to the board as hopefully it gets approved. So.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, we are understanding that potentially we'll find out more next week or two on that because obviously the legislature needs to pass that in order for it to, to actually take effect. So more to come on that. And just to wrap it up, obviously, you know, I think we look at 1920, what I guess we would call our, a normal school year, as normal as it can get. We had predominantly in-person, both at elementary and secondary. We did offer a little bit of hybrid, primarily for our home and hospital students or students who are independent studies. And in terms of virtual online, we only had credit recovery. So the students were full-time in-person while also taking additional classes. At this point in time, you can see, you know, we have in-person being very much the smaller amount. Elementary is considered hybrid because it is four days and not five by state definition. So obviously our elementary schools are hybrid. And then we have our virtual and online group. And we have about 13% of students in, that chose the virtual academy. So as we look forward to 21, 22, our goal really is to get back to in-person as much as possible for those families that want in-person. And what in-person will look like is our goal is to get back to a normal in-person schedule, five days a week. Traditional classes, while recognizing we don't know just yet what the legal requirements from CDPH will be. But if our baseline is getting back to what it looked like at the beginning of the 2019, 20 school year, we want, we'll make adjustments from there. The key piece that we have to navigate and that all the superintendents in discussions this last week in Orange County, we're talking about was specific to social distancing. That will be one of the, the larger challenges we all face. If the social distancing is still remaining at six feet. They have had some flexibility at the state level. We've seen more recently where they're allowing it to be a little less than that. But we're waiting to confirm exactly what the fall 21 will be expecting of us. But again, our full intention is return to what, what is we deem as normal. But recognizing too, that we have some students that might be interested in hybrid. So we will continue to explore that as a potential option for students and also virtual. We see that there may be a need in our district for that to continue. We're not sure if the state will require it, as they have this year, to require that we provide a virtual option. But regardless, we recognize that some families really appreciated this option. And we will explore that as well and determine what the interest level is and how we might go about funding that. Obviously, and our goal is to be able to move forward and provide the most rigorous courses we can in person, online or hybrid, regardless of how we're delivering it. So again, appreciate the board's support as we engage in this. And I apologize that I'll have a ton of information about fall just yet. But that's simply because we don't know, as vaccine rollout continues and as CDPH, the particle but health changes their guidance and guidelines, we will adjust accordingly and I will keep the board apprised of that as that, as that happens. But we are pushing pretty hard at the superintendent level because we recognize we need to be able to plan for fall and this is when we start. So they, they need to provide us the information so that we can do that accordingly. And I will continue to advocate for that. So, um, they, they need to provide us the information so that we can do that accordingly. And, uh, I will continue to advocate for that. Information so we can give a clearer picture as the spring progresses of what fall will look like. With that, uh, we thank you and I thank my team. This was a, as you can see, a team effort. There's been a lot going on. There was a lot of, uh, good data and information in, in the, uh, presentation tonight. But again, kudos to all of the, the team members for the time and energy that they put in and trying to make. Uh, the best school year possible for our students. So I open it up for questions, the comments.
Can we go around the table? Just member Vickers, are you ready to ask questions now? Okay, member Kelly. Oh, her member Vickers is on. Sorry, member Kelly. If you, member Vickers, go ahead. Sorry. I can't see her, Jim.
It, the, the wifi in this area is not very good.
Okay. Okay, member Kelly. So she's, she's still, why don't you go ahead and we'll come back to remember.
First, I want to say it was an exceptionally excellent presentation. Uh, I am so proud of all of you as far as what you've been doing. Uh, I, you know, uh, I, I, I don't think the community realizes as far as the time efforts. Planning that goes into making all the pieces of the puzzle come together for the students in this district. And, uh. As a former administrator, I am just so impressed with, with the job that you've been done. The, uh, the special education stuff is just so outstanding. I mean, uh, kudos and, um. And I think Jeff can, can, uh, fill us in on this that. Don't we get reimbursed for a lot of the stuff for, for this, for the special education programs that, that, that we offer? Jeff?
So you kind of broke up the first.
Can you hear me?
That question.
Hello? Oh, I was saying that for the special education programs, don't we get reimbursed for a lot of those from, uh, from, from this, the, the federal government?
Pennies on the dollar.
Making sense.
Yeah, he's on the dollar. Penny's on the dollar. Yeah, it's, we're, it's all borderline self-funded almost the entire thing. Yeah.
Oh, okay. But, but again, I thought, I thought that you, you all did superbly well and I, I hope the community recognizes. What you have, uh, accomplished at this trying time of dealing with a pandemic that, uh. Is, uh, is overwhelming for, for everyone. And, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you, member Kelly. Member Vickers, do you have questions, comments?
I just had a, a quick question for, um, Irene White, that she mentioned the, um. Three hundred plus students, but, um, still a number of those students are doing virtual learning. I know that they've come back at all the campuses, but I just wondered if it's, uh. Approximately what percentage of the three hundred are back to being on the campus?
So as I mentioned, we have three hundred and twelve children that are eligible for special education at this moment in time. Uh, in terms of an actual percentage, as I mentioned, I, I didn't figure out the percentages. We have about a hundred and twenty-five kids at the high school level. Which is a pretty large percentage of that. We have approximately. Twenty to twenty-three kids attending in person. I would be more than happy to, to give you actual.
That's close enough.
Okay.
Okay. I, and I also found it very interesting that the, uh, how we're finding the success with the virtual I E Ps. You know, as far as being more efficient, because I'm, I'm reading that, you know, across the board in business and industry, there's, there's some of the changes that will stay. Because they found that the operations are, are more, more productive and more efficient. I found, uh, the presentations to be very informative as a board member to ki, give me a better idea. Of what's been accomplished, uh, how the data has been collected and also how much we're providing for students and for parents. And what we are planning to do as best as we can know at this point going forward into summer. I've had. Just a question asked to me about fifth grade students transitioning to middle school. And I know it was touched on more with eighth grade students and transitioning or bridging to high school. Should those parents, should they, uh, talk to the principal at the site if they're.
No.
About that. I don't know who that goes to, but that's just a, a question as, as we're getting near the end of the year. I know we've, in the past, we've paid a lot of attention of the, of the five to six change and the.
Yeah, I, uh, I'll hijack the, uh. This member Vickers, excuse me.
That's fine.
I, yeah, so it, all the big transitions are really important for planning and for preparation and that, and, um. And as students transition into middle school, there, there is a formal kind of orientation type window that will be run for all students. Uh, and, and hopefully we'd be able to have students back for that event. And that's the same thing with, with the high school as well. Now, as far as summer school programming and readiness for middle school, it is a big, it is a big shift to go from, uh, usually a single teacher to five or six teachers as of a sixth grade student. So. We want to ensure that students have mastered their essential learning outcomes for fifth grade. To be best prepared for sixth grade. I also want students that don't need summer school to really enjoy their summer. So. You know, there's a balance there and our teachers are going to make recommendations if there's skill, skill needs. Uh, and certainly we'd honor some requests for parents who are interested in having refreshers. I will say another element of the thought exchange that, that came up that I did not mention was, was an interest in potentially at the middle school level in particular, social opportunities. So. That really gets away from the academic piece, but I think that that's a, that's a, I, I absolutely understand that, like whether it's in, you know, not necessarily. Uh, social skills, mental health type work, but really social opportunities, semi-structured social opportunities. So that's something we're also exploring at that level.
Thank you.
And then just, I'll just add on, um, as far as timelines. We typically start communicating with the, the middle school teams, there's communicating with. The families in March as we end trimester two. And then they'll be talking about just different programs or, or, or webinars or it seems like that, uh, as they start thinking about the following year, but it is typically around mid-March and they'll be getting a lot more communication.
I know that we've done things before where they go to the other site. And I'm sure that I'm just assuming that'll be addressed, whether we have to do it virtually or whether we'll be back enough that we could take small groups, but that's. I've had those questions also.
Yeah, well, we'll have to follow those, the guidelines at that time. Obviously, we'd like to have them on campus. But if we're not able to, we'll have to find something, uh, as equivalent as possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just had a question, Dr. Valoria. Since we did this presentation with so much information this way and we took public comment first. I'm assuming that some of the people that are listening may have questions. So what would be the recommendation of them to be able to, for them, other than board members? This is just a board member question time. I think there was some confusion after Dr. Allman's report. Which made me think, how will, how should they, um, address their questions?
Well, if they can send their questions to me and I'll just route them to the, uh, appropriate person to respond. Uh, that's probably the easiest way. Uh, I believe Dr. Allman was on and, and listening. So, um. More than likely, he already responded, um, or was in the process of responding to the question as he heard it. So. But that's the easiest way. That way we can, uh, go ahead and kind of push it out and, and do our best to get, uh, good answers to people.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, member Vickers. Member Perry, you have any questions, comments? You're still muted.
Thank you. Thank you, member Vickers. I think that was a great question and to give people after hearing this, I'm sure they still have more questions and. Have an avenue to, to, um, ask those. So I, I want to make sure. The tiers come out basically on Tuesday. So if on a Tuesday, we move to the red tier. Then do we open the following Monday?
That'd be our intent. Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I understood that and the five days didn't include weekend or included weekends and.
That's my understanding. Yeah, that, I don't, they didn't qualify it as business days. So. View on it, when they don't say business days, that means calendar days. I think if you ask an attorney, they'll tell you the same thing. If it doesn't call out business days, it means calendar days.
Okay, great. And it's, did I miss this? Are we continuing on with the trimester? For next year or have we not?
No. Discuss. My, what I, what I said was, uh, at the very end, our intention is to get back to what we started in twenty nineteen, which is our traditional schedules, traditional. You know, obviously we're not sure what the limitations will be, uh, if any, uh, in the fall, but our, our intention is to get back to, uh, twenty nineteen schedules.
Okay, great. And for, um, Dr. White, I, I mean, it sounds like special education is just doing. Dynamically. I, I wondered if you had any ideas about why there has been an uptick in high school students?
Um, I do, I do. Uh, my hypothesis is, is that as parents have been working with their children at home. They're, they're better understanding how their kids are learning. And I think as an outcome of that, we're, we're seeing them raise more questions. Not. Not all of the questions result in a referral for special education assessment. However, we are able to hold at the various levels. You know, student study team meetings and talk about learning profiles and what their children need.
Great. I, I like your hypothesis. And I also really appreciate that we are trying to get all the students, once we can, all of the students back. That want to come even at the high school that have those challenging schedules. And perhaps with the flexibility, Dr. Valoria talked about with more space, with, um, easing the cohorts and the spacing. I, and I, I'm hoping that we can get every single one of them back in their classes in some way. Now, does the six foot guideline? Is that for inside or outside? Can it be closer if it's outside?
No, it's six feet, but they have, um, provided some flexibility, as I said, that in certain cases, um, they were, they're allowing four feet. But you have to have, you know, justify a reason as to why it is that you have to reduce it down to, to four feet. Obviously, our goal is to maintain six because that is the guideline. But in those instances where we have to consider four, we need to really. Look at it and make a determination as to exactly why it is that, you know, four feet is, is the minimum we can meet. And, uh, and, and simply so we can make sure that, you know, we've exhausted all options before we go down something like that. But I, there are, I know districts, um, throughout that have. You know, who were reopened, um, and in January, for example, uh, when things really kind of, uh, increased in terms of case rate. They, um, uh, were concerned because they were, they had, you know. Six feet and then the state came in and, and made some edits and, and they weren't sure how they were going to accomplish. Can staying open with six feet and then the state came back and said, well, there's some, there's some flexibility there. But so that's what happens unfortunately with the Department of Public Health is, uh, we, we get told one thing and then, you know, they make adjustments and then they make adjustments. And so we're always trying to figure out, okay, so, you know. Uh, what adjustment, um, do we need to make it, uh, to correspond with that? So. Uh, I would expect hopefully if, if it's going to be four feet that they codify that and say, you know, it's four feet at the, um. No, less than four feet. Um, but, uh, you know, our goal is to remain at six feet and as, as much as possible. And if we need to move, you know, classrooms around where it might be, we can, we'll make that happen. But if there's an instance where it might be. Students, uh, four feet, we, the key is, the, the general rule is that teachers have to be six feet away. Uh, from the students. That is a, that, there's a non-starter like that has to be the case, but they're allowing some flexibility within the students themselves, simply because of transmission rates between students, et cetera. So.
And could we possibly use some outdoor space in some of the tents and so on? Okay.
Yeah, we have, we didn't put, you know, we have all the easy ups. We just didn't put them out because at the high school level.
Everybody was there.
Noah's there and, and we've had, you know, some pretty, um, strong winds and, and weather over the, you know, last month. And so, uh, but there, we have them, they're ready to, to be deployed as necessary. Uh, obviously today would have been a fantastic day to be outside, um, and a lot of our students at the elementary were, uh, you know, running around and enjoying themselves. So. But yes, we will look at those as, as options as well as necessary.
Okay. And I love the idea that Dr. Keller brought up also. About the social piece at the middle school, maybe even at the high school, because they've missed out a lot of the year on those social connections. And thinking of that and, uh. A comment that we got from a parent, we've, we're working really hard to get our sports back in, in different fashions and. Um, I was brought up, what about for the arts students? Could they possibly? Be brought back, the dance students or the drama students, the music students? To meet together outside with, I know they don't have a coach, but maybe a teaching assistant or something like that, that, so they could. Also not be socially isolated and maybe.
Of course. Of course. I think, you know, as the, uh, when we get into the red tier and we're able to bring our students back on the campus. Those are going to be the things that we want to make sure we're ready to, you know, figure out. So what, what are we going to do? And allow for our students, uh, to come back onto those campuses and in those electives, those, those after school programs, those extracurriculars that. Uh, allow them to return. Right now, we, we can't because the, we, we can do sports simply because there's sports guidance that allows us to do new sports. That's a. Separate set of guidance that we're following and adhering to. But for in-person, the, um, they don't have, they didn't provide us with guidance around drama. And, um, to bring them back separately, that's just for in-person. So once we get to, to in-person, we will definitely be, uh, looking to offer the, our students. That opportunity. I think it's important and we can, they could do it outside. Um, they could do social distancing opportunities there, uh, including music, et cetera, that, uh, can all be done. So.
So it's because there's no, no guidance. I was thinking not their class, not because I know we can't bring some classes back and not others, but more. As like you said, kind of an extracurricular practice. And then, um. I wondered about the. The, were our standards for grades the same during COVID? You know, we, we showed the chart with the A's, the B's, the C's, the D's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, uh, if that's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, yeah, I know, uh, yes, the, the grade standards, you know, the ninety percent is an A and the seven, eighty, ninety, those remain the same. We do recognize like there was changes made to curriculum, right?
Right. Not as much, not as.
More focused, right? If you're a trimester model, you know, if you're an online, obviously it was delivered in a very different way. So there were changes in the delivery. It's definitely in the teaching and learning experience. But the standards, uh, were the same. Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then I noticed on the chart there for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, there was something about a no pass. What was that? Pass, no pass?
Yeah, that was last, last spring.
Well, I do remember that last spring, but that was two thousand twenty, right?
Yes, did it say it under a different year?
Uh, maybe I got it wrong. Probably didn't. We didn't give grades last spring.
It was meant to be last spring if, if, um, where that was at.
Okay, okay. Thanks a lot for that. Okay, I think, oh, one more thing. Uh, so for the summer school also. It was very successful doing the dual enrollment with, um, and with Irvine Valley. And this year maybe doing the social psychology. Is there a possibility of doing some other dual enrollment classes at the high school? I'm looking for getting something that is, um. Not remedial. Do the remedial part, but to, to do something else also.
I'll turn that over to Chad.
Or. Yeah, I'm not sure what. Yeah. What, what do you mean by not remediate? Because a social psychology class isn't.
It's not remedial.
Remedial class.
Right, no, I know. We were talking about doing the, the course makeup and the remedial.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about doing something that is not.
Right, 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 right.
And it will give kids a chance also to be back together, but to actually be getting double credit. And so maybe we could do more of that.
Right. So we've, you know, we, uh, explore options and opportunities for our students, uh, through I B C. Um, we have a list of classes that, you know, potentially we can offer, but we all obviously have to work directly with I B C because they're the, the ones who are offering that class with their staff. So we can explore, um, you know, the potential to, to look for other classes, but we have a, uh, an agreed upon list, um, that we, we work off of. So. The, the community college budget, um, you know, oftentimes impacts what we can. So the, the community college budget, you know, oftentimes impacts what we can offer there too. Because they, they run classes at a higher level of numbers than we traditionally do. But that's something we, we will continue to, to explore and see if there are opportunities to expand our offerings, whether we host it ourselves or whether the students can obviously go to IBC and take the courses there, which is, which is an option as well at times. So.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great if we could host it here transportation-wise. Can we also work with Saddleback?
Not, we wouldn't be able to do that right this summer. No. Our agreements with, with IBC, and so we try to, there's reasons behind why we work with different universities. I'd be happy to explain, explain it to you. It's a much longer story. There's, there's a history, there's a history there. So I would be happy to explain it.
Okay. Well, I, I know that Capo, for instance, has kind of opened up for students to take classes at the community college, whether they're on one of their campuses or they actually go there. And I wondered if we could explore that. They, in, I believe it was in August, they told me they had kind of changed for the time being their bylaws. They may change back, but to accept more, more classes, even classes that are offered at the high school, they will accept if the student takes it at a community college.
I can't speak specifically to, to their, their programming, but.
I just wondered if we could explore being more open to students taking classes and getting credit for, you know, getting credit for both.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chad.
To the, to the numbers, previous to this past summer, we struggled to fill that one class. There was, it was, they, they talked to us about canceling it the last two summers prior to this one. We weren't getting, we really got 25, they really wanted them to be at 35 or above. And then when this one went to online, our numbers really went up last summer. And so we were able to offer it and, and because they have her, you know, their budget side that they have to meet based on enrollment. And so that was, this is the first time we've really been in a, a more comfortable space as far as enrollment and offering that in the summer with that one class.
Okay, okay. And we wouldn't be able to take students from close by, like Laguna de Gal or Dana Point. It would only be.
Member, Member Perry, I, I think this might be a better discussion off of here, just because this is really about community college and has so many more other issues to it. And I know there are more people that want to ask questions too. Is that okay?
Can we maybe have another discussion about summer school then?
We'll bring it back in March. Yes.
It comes back in March where it normally, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I thought this was the one and only time.
No, no, no. Like I said in my email, it happens in mid-March every year. And so it'll come back in mid-March. But they just want to touch on it because people are more anxious right now.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for all the great questions. And Clark Osborne, if you can wait, because I was gonna, I thought I saw our student board rep Temple has hand up. But I, that was a while back, so I'm not sure. Would you like to say something, Soren, ask a question or make a comment?
Uh, I mean, I did, I just pretty, pretty short comment. Yeah, and Member Perry can touch a little bit with the, how we saw the, the composition of the, the change and the changes in the As and Bs breakdown. And that was interesting to highlight how, even though there has obviously been, you know, change in the curriculum, we do see that our students are performing if we, if we go for, if we go for the assumption that they are grading on the same, on the comparative level. They would start since our, our, what's the word? Our, our, uh, performing at a comparative level academically and performance-wise to previous years and even above the, the numbers are, are correct and that. And I also want to like, look forward to, like, get more, more data points. We can like, compare effective numbers and find effective comparisons to determine how, like, the real changes besides just the grades. That's a very kind of multi-factor angle to look at. And, and thank you everyone for the amazing, amazing report. It's, it's so good to see all that information. I learn, I learn so much every so time. You guys come up and then talk. It's really awesome to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Clark Osborne, do you have questions, comments?
Thanks, President Norman. And just a couple left. Thank you guys all for the, the good questions to date. I had a question for Mr. Conlin on the, the testing. Just to go back to the beginning in sequential order, I'm first so impressed that we're going to be able to offer testing every two weeks on, on a cadence for our secondary reopening. I feel like that's going to be critical. I just want us to think about how we increase participation, student participation in that, knowing that we're, you know, maybe 40 to 50% of, of families have opted in at the elementary level. I don't know what it is at the staff level, but my focus is really on, you know, how do we, you know, how do we reach out and make sure that people are taking advantage of this amazing opportunity? If there's any ideas there. And if there's not, it can be just kind of a question that's out there because we have some time to think about that.
Yeah. I think one aspect we are looking at is, I know some, maybe it was President Norman that had mentioned previously that maybe the PCR swab is maybe scares some people and the idea of, you know, having a saliva option. It is, it is something we are exploring. The, our current lab is in the process of getting one of their, their labs kind of switched over and validated to be able to support that. So it won't be for this, this upcoming on the 23rd, but we're looking to have that be an option. But we're also going to share the data on as well, because as, you know, we're waiting for, but typically the accuracy level of a saliva test, maybe it might not be as, as accurate as it would be with PCR. So kind of giving full, full disclosure and say, if we do get to the point where we, we can offer the two different types. And again, that might bring some people in who normally would have been fearful of the, you know, the brain tickle, even though they've gotten a lot better with the, and, you know, we've had way, I've had way too many COVID tests, but they've gotten a lot more kind of comfortable. So I'm, I'm thinking that one piece that we are looking to bring, that, that could bring more people in. If that's, if that, if that's, that fear is holding them back. And we'll continue to, yeah, to find ways to advertise and promote and get the message out.
That's great. Yeah. I think that's, that's the most important part. And kudos for finding the way to get the insurance billed, because that is a nightmare on a personal level. If anybody's tried to build their insurance for a COVID test. So I really appreciate that. And you're saving the district tons of money and offering it on a, on a really frequent cadence. So that just is really exciting news to me. And let's see, I think the question for Dr. Mayberry on the cohorting of kids, uncohortables, I'll call them. I think Member Perry asked about this, but I just wanted to, to reemphasize, especially because we weren't intending to have our secondary kids out this long. And that's just coming up over and over again to really find a way at the door with, you know, maybe four feet if that was allowable or outside, but really, you know, stretching to make that happen for those, those students to be able to come back that were in those uncohortable models. I, I think the information has shifted and we've learned so much about how we might be able to do that safely, even at some of our own elementary campuses. And so that was a comment. Dr. Mayberry, thank you for looking at that. A question for Dr. Valoria, just to confirm with the tier status. The red tier seems to be coming closer to us. You know, we're coming down 20 to 40% in our adjusted case rates each week. And I just want to confirm that it sounds like we're ready to go the moment that we get there. And is that your feeling and your understanding as well with the five days and all of that that Member Perry asked about?
Yes. I mean, we're, like I said, we're, we were ready in November, so we're ready now. And we'll continue to, you know, do what we need to do to ensure it's a safe place for students. So as we do, we make adjustments as things change. And so we're constantly trying to evolve and find ways to bring more students on a campus. And as Member Perry pointed out, you know, the students that are involved in extracurricular activities that are not, that are not part of current guidance that allows us to bring students onto campus, finding ways to get them involved and allow them to be a part of the, the elective or extracurricular activity they're part of. So we will continue to be ready to, as soon as it happens. You know, we're obviously tracking the numbers and keeping a very close eye on it. So I expect I'll know probably a week in advance of going into red, that we're going into red, just in terms of the, the way the case counts are going. So as soon as we get to that point, we'll, we'll start our process of kind of communicating out, and we'll do it in advance as well, but we'll really start in earnest of communicating out to our families of, again, what to expect when they return, what are the parameters and policies and, and all the procedures that they need to know when coming onto campus, et cetera. But, you know, again, we've learned a lot over this course this year about what works, what doesn't work necessarily with the elementaries. And so we'll parlay that out to make it as smooth of a transition as possible once we get ready to go. But we are ready.
Dr. Valoria, could you please put the rumor to, to bed regarding where our unions are at concerning reopening?
They're in support of us reopening when we get to red. So we will be reopening when we get to red.
There's no pushback from our unions. Our unions are with us.
They've been supportive. I appreciate President Warder and, and President Hopper. We have real positive relationships and we will continue to navigate that. I see Margaret just popped her camera off. So if she, she can give a thumbs up as well as she wishes, but, or makes a comment. But yeah, we've been, we've been ready to go and so have they. So.
Thank you.
Okay, Clark Osborne, do you have more questions and comments or comments?
No, that's it for me tonight. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for that. Thank you, guys, for all the information. It's fantastic.
Okay, I have a, a list that, I mean, Dr. Valoria, I'm gonna start with you more for clarification. So once we're in red tier, likes, like athletes, our, our art students, can they attend, if they're remaining virtual, can they still attend the programs, just like the art program in person? Or would they have to be in person or the in-person cohort to do that?
So if they're, if they're in, enrolled in a class, like if they're enrolled in art class, for example, students, so yeah, going back to our, our, what we have set up is that students who wish to remain at home, who are in the trimester system, can still stay at home when, when we go back to in-person, right? So they don't have to come in if they don't wish to. So they'll be able to stay virtual. And as Mr. Morrison pointed out, we have the technology that allows the students to virtually enter the classroom, the in-person classroom where their fellow classmates will be. What I think Member Perry was referencing was more specific to kind of more of those after-school opportunities for students that might not be the traditional class that they're enrolled in, like the students who are involved in, in Clue. Then they want to be able to do something outside, socially distanced masks, obviously. But, you know, that will be something that we'll work with staff on to determine the appropriateness. That, that would be harder for the student to be virtually involved in, because bringing that stuff outside to do that. But, you know, I've seen some pretty ingenious things happening at different schools and throughout the, the United States, trying to find ways to bring students involved to, or both at home and in-person.
And if a student who is at home decides just for that one thing, after school or whatever it might be, like MUN or art or that they wanted to participate in person, they could do that without being in person in their other classes.
For sure.
That also, okay. Like flexibility, you guys are just so flexible.
Flexible, yeah. I mean, the mantra is flexible and adaptable this year, right? Just trying to figure it out as we go.
Okay, that's awesome. Another clarification was, will uncoorted, I like the term, Clark Osborne, uncoorted, you know, where they don't work, the cohorts don't work, for those students, will they still be able to come on campus to take the class, even if they have to be in another room or something like that? Is that being worked on for those kids? So that they, if they choose to be on campus, they could still be on campus?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Yes. So we are, you know, as like Dr. Valoria talked about, right? There's a little adjustment to guidance of like, well, maybe you could do four feet, right? Then we adjust our plans and then, and adjust the rooms. And with, you know, with how a master schedule high school interacts, if you make one adjustment, sometimes adjust five other things, right? So it is a constant reiteration process of like, let's try this to see if we can eliminate this problem. Know that made it worse. Let's go back to this. So we're, we're working on different spacing issues or, or challenges. But yeah, that would be the setup, is the kids will be able to come back on campus if they want to.
Okay. Like a game of Risk. I have more questions for you, Dr. Mayberry, since you're, since you're on. When a student has a D or F, like in that first check period, right? What is done or what is different this year in supporting those students? I think we know what's been happening. I was just wondering, like, if there's different things happening for those kids at the DNF level? Dr. Chad?
Sorry, I thought you said Dr. Valoria.
Oh, no, I was saying, Mayberry, and I was just like, what?
Your, your question was what, you know, what's?
The DNF level, I know of the supports that we have in place, right? And you guys have talked about this. I just didn't know if there's something different that we're doing now, right? In COVID, that's different than what we've done in the past.
I mean, I could speak to one thing that was definitely a little bit different this year is we certainly look at grades when we get to progress report and we're looking at those. But we, we had a much larger group of, of staff members really digging deep into those grades. It was a new model, it was a new trimester model. We really were watching it closely. And then as soon as we saw any variance or a group of students or a class, it was all hands on deck. How do we make the adjustment? How do we? Because when you previously, when we were in a setting that we were comfortable with or that we had done previously, like we knew interventions would typically work. And so this was a larger effort of larger group of staff members that really jumped in at that progress report time than we probably have in the past.
And I think also, yeah, what I'd add on to that, Dr. Mayberry's comments, is that, you know, we all recognize that there are drawbacks to the trimester model. But one thing that I would say that was, and I think Soren mentioned it in his comments, or I've been with Soren multiple times this week in terms of meetings. So I'm not sure if it was this meeting or in previous ones. But he, we had talked about the fact that the teachers are, are working with less students. And so they're able to actually focus on their, on those students and they have a lower teacher ratio than they traditionally have ever had, right? So they're able to identify and support students even more so than traditionally in the past. So if you factor in, you know, during a pandemic, having that as an option, an opportunity for our, our students to have their teachers work with them and have, you know, a little more focus, I think is, has led to some successes. So again, just, I appreciate the teachers and all the efforts they're putting in to support all, all of our students. You know, it's, I think the results kind of speak for themselves.
I, I think they do. But thank you. I do have a question in general, maybe for Dr. Mayberry. What do D and Fs look like in other districts? Because I did read an article where they'd gone up 48% in Virginia. Yeah, they went up in North Carolina and stuff like that. What, what does it look like in districts here comparatively for our students?
You know, we haven't seen a lot of districts release them yet. I mean, certainly some of the bigger districts, like an LA Unified or a Long Beach, they've started to release some of them. But we have heard internally, like there are some that have DNF rates that are up at the 30 to 40% marks for their students at their secondary level. I haven't seen any release publicly from our, any of our neighboring districts to, to verify that.
Well, again, thanks to all the work that you and all the teachers are doing and just jumping in there when the kids need help, because everybody's looking at the new trimester system. Really appreciate that, understanding that. Dr. Keller, I have a question on, and one, I'm grateful for all the work you guys are doing and everything you're presenting. I know it was getting late, so I'm just gonna go to my questions in here. But Dr. Keller, I was wondering, how does the seven self-harm assessments compare to other years?
Well, that's, well, for a mid-year check, that's probably on, on pace. I, I'll have to double-check that from our previous year. Unfortunately, that is a reality of, you know, our teachers identify concerns and, and immediately report that to our staff. We train all of our teachers to recognize RISA warning signs and, and get them connected. And then we conduct an evaluation. So it's probably about, yeah, I, I can get back to you in a weekly about it, but.
That'd be wonderful.
Double-check.
Thank you. And Dr. White, all my questions were answered. I'm just so impressed with all you're doing. And I want to say thank you for asking us to do assessments over the summer so that you guys could be on top of that. So that was all you. Appreciate you giving us the kudos, but that's all you. The accolades go to you. And then Mr. Dixon, lastly, are you going to have enough, are you going to have the necessary funds to hire additional staff in the fall if we need to respond to COVID like we just did?
We are well-positioned again this year as we were last year in terms of fiscal years. We still maintain our potential one-time dollars to the tune of about four million, almost four and a half million to build on the flexibility that we need.
Awesome. I'm gonna say thank you to, to Member Vickers for all the years of making sure that was all there. I just had to ask, because looking at all those dollars, I was just very concerned of whether we would, you know, we'd be there, whether the funding comes in or doesn't. Okay, does anyone else have a comment or question? I think that's wraps it up besides saying thank you to everyone. Okay.
I just wanted, I just wanted the superintendent to comment on if vaccines become available, are we going to be providing them at the school sites?
Right now, that is not in the cards for us to provide them. We're working with the County Office of Education OCDE as well as the Orange County Healthcare Agency to, you know, locate opportunities for our staff to get them. They're looking at regional hubs. SOCA is an example of that. The challenge obviously right now is the current two vaccines that are out there require significant refrigeration. And that is something that has been one of the challenges that many places are facing regarding being able to have the infrastructure in order to do it. That being said, we are looking for opportunities to work with our neighboring districts to potentially provide vaccines in addition to what the county is doing for educators in particular. But I know that the county itself, healthcare agency is looking for ways to expand beyond just the super sites. And they've identified some potential sites throughout Orange County that they would like to use for educator sites that then would stay open for the remainder of the, really the time we need to get vaccines out all the way through August and September. And once educators go through and one B, then they would look at one C and so on, and they would just keep them open and run through. Asking our staff actually to help facilitate that and run some of those. So for example, our nurse Pam Madge, next week, when many of us will be enjoying our time off, she will be working at SOCA giving vaccines to people. So, you know, they are, they've asked our nurses, all the school nurses throughout the county to help support that work. And so they have stepped up big time. All the nurses in the county have been fantastic, going above and beyond and extra hours, et cetera, to make it happen. So to answer your question, we're not going to be giving them at the high school. You know, that's not going to be something we'll be doing, but our staff will be looking to go to a super site when we're allowed to do that, or a regional site that we set up just for educators.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. Before we move to nine A, I would like with consent to take a break until nine o'clock. It's eight fifty-five, eight forty-four. Everyone good with that? Consent? The nod from board members? Awesome. And then I think we'll see you guys back at nine then. Turn off your mics. Let me see. Perry. Member Vickers, are you there? Just with the video off? Yay. It's nine oh one. Are we okay with Rika being, or do we want to wait for Jim?
Continue.
Yeah, okay. So this brings us to nine A Information and Business Service. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak to the 2021 facility master plan update tonight? I'll find you on the screen. Everybody move places.
At this time, there are no hands raised.
There are no hands raised. Okay. So thank you for that. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours for your presentation.
Thank you, President Norman. I first want to, before Ryan Zada presents this, this information to the board, acknowledge the facilities team because what's been great is, one, having a 10-year facilities plan and keeping up to date and knowing what projects are coming up and planning for it. And what's even better is because of our great facilities team, we were able to respond to a pandemic and still complete the projects on the plan. So kudos to Ryan and everyone who's been working on, I know he's been working his butt off to get these projects complete. And there's a lot of more exciting projects on the horizon. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan to present the update for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. All right, before we jump into this, I just want to remind the board, at this time, the facilities master plan is for information only. And this presentation will provide a brief overview. The plan is a living document and we bring the board, we bring the plan to the board every year, first as information and later for action. Next slide, please. Within this presentation, I will cover current five-year enrollment projections. We'll review major projects planned over the next five years. Discuss the need for a study session to get input on the district's office renovation project. And I will give an update on the Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization Project. Next slide, please. Enrollment projections have been updated to provide a five-year forecast. Current enrollment for this year, 2020, is 2,624 students. Next year, 2021, shown in gray on the slide, identifies a slight increase in the total enrollment totaling 2,661 students. The increase is driven by a larger incoming kindergarten class. After 2021, there's a slight decline in the district and the district stabilizes around 2,500 students in the out years. Next slide. There's a lot included in the master plan. That being said, I'd like to highlight some significant projects included within the plan scheduled to occur over the next five years. During this year, 2021, the Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization project, project is in progress. We've added a new project to the plan for this year. That's the programming of a preschool facility. It's shown right now under El Moro. And within that programming, we'll be able to review the location. We'll look at the options, needs, we'll look at a construction timeline, cost, and even review funding models. And we'll bring all that information back to the board for direction and approval. In 2022, El Moro and Top of the World both have extensive four-CLE classroom projects planned. In 2023, we'll have our next capital project that follows the Thurston Middle School Classroom and Field Modernization. This 2023 project at Laguna Beach High School, that's the admin office and main quad modernization. In 2024, there is a project planned at the Laguna Beach High School and Community Pool, a deck edge and plaster tile replacement. That's a project that's done in partnership with the city and there's a, it's a split funding model there. 2025, we have the Laguna Beach High School Stadium Turp and Track Replacement. It's hard to believe we're coming up on the 10th year for that project. But we're tracking that project there. Next slide. There's a need to have a future study session to review the future renovation of the district office facility. The capital project is targeted for 2025 and board input is needed to take initial planning steps. I think during the future study session, we will review the existing facility layout and use. The facility needs will be explored such as office space, conference rooms, restrooms, storage, parking, et cetera. This is all to provide a functional district office space that can best meet the district's current and future needs. The study session will provide staff with direction for next steps to start the planning process. Next slide. A quick update on the Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization Project. The classroom building construction is over halfway complete and it is tracking a completion date of June of this year. In this picture, you can see the building framing is complete and the roof system is being installed. On the interior, the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing systems are also being installed at this time. The field portion of the project scope is out to public bid and bids are planned to be brought to the board for approval in March. Construction is planned to start mid-June after the school year ends and is projected to complete December of 2021. Next slide. And that would conclude this short presentation. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you for that, Brian. Does anyone have any questions? I could start backwards. Clerk Osborne, do you have a question?
I just have a question on the field modernization. Do you expect it to go all the way through December?
You're asking me a tricky question. I would say conservatively for occupancy, full use of the field by the school site, that yes, that is what we want to stick with. There's a lot of unforeseen that could happen during the, the construction process and it's good to build in some float in those schedules. I think the construction schedule is, that's out to public bid, does show a completion more around Thanksgiving time. But it's good to have that, that turnover time period in there because there's a lot of loose ends to pick up with F and E. There could be work around the campus with, you know, the fire lane and different logistical parts of the campus that are used to construct the project need to be put back into working order. So that's, that's a conservative approach and it's something that I feel confident, you know, putting out there that we can deliver on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jim, go. Jim with us? I think we lost him. Okay. Member Perry, do you have a question or comment?
Lots of exciting things to come. Lots of exciting things to come. No questions.
Member Vickers, do you have a question or comment?
I have a question. Just thank you, Ryan, for the comment and thank you for working to complete the projects.
You're more than welcome. Thank you for the support.
And Mr. Zada, before I echo that, I want to make sure that our student board rep doesn't have a comment or question. Let me shake your head. Thank you so much for the work. Do you think that we're, we might get the district done before we do OBHS field again? You're gonna have to answer that.
I think we'd all like that. And that's why we need that future study session.
Okay, we'll work on that. You're doing all the hard work and heavy lifting. We'll work on that. Thank you so much. With that, we're gonna move on to nine B Monthly Financial Update. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item?
There are no handed to sign.
Thank you so much. Since there are not, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours again.
All right, thank you. So everything, this is through December and everything's tracking as we've seen with the November and October. However, in this report, there are two things that I would like to highlight and point out. One being on the second page, you'll see a new item under Special Program Expenditures entitled COVID-19. So now what you can see is the year to, current year-to-date expenditures related to COVID-19 plus the annual budget. Now, the reason the annual budget's more than what the year-to-date expenditures are is because there's ongoing costs with items that haven't been covered, such as the disinfecting that's still ongoing and the staffing that we talked about in the presentation. The second thing I'd like to point out is on the fourth page of the report, under the General Fund Expenditure Dashboard Summary. And it just, it would look funny without explanation. And if you look at the expenditures by object table, you'll notice that the transfers you'll notice that the transfers prior year was very low. And current year is, or I'm sorry, prior year was very high and current year is very low. And that's the transfers for CIP, the Capital Improvement Program and Facility Repair Replacement Program. Last year, we did those transfers in December. So they were approved by the board in December. So they occurred then. This year, they occurred in January. So when you see January's monthly financial report, you're going to see the transfers much higher than prior year. So it's a flip-flop. So I just want to make sure I explain that. So with that, any questions, I'd be happy to take.
Does see anyone wanting to ask a question?
No, no questions.
Okay. Thank you, as always, Jeff. Sorry, now. I was just, I'm looking at all the windows, looking for anyone to shake it. I'm looking up. Okay. But thank you so much. Thanks for always pointing out being proactive in what you know we're going to notice or pushing on. Really appreciate that. This moves us along to not 11A. Sorry, give me one sec to.
13.
13, thank you. This moves us along to 13A. And Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of agreement for contracted services with HDL, Corin and Con to perform property tax forecasts and information services for to not exceed a fee of $9,600 tonight?
There are no names or no, no hands at this time.
No, thank you, Mr. Conlon. But that, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. So this is the same property tax forecast company we've used for the past two years. We're recommending that we continue forward with HDL, Corin and Cone. The one issue, one thing I would like to note with their services is in both instances, for the projection year, they've been within a quarter of 1% of accuracy. So it's been incredibly helpful. They've been very accurate. And this is essential at a time where we know that revenues will be volatile. In this year's case, they've been volatile for the state's benefit. That's why I'm seeing a lot of those one-time funds coming to school districts, hopefully, in terms of grants. But what the out years hold is more important for us as we financially plan the future. So I really appreciate the board's support on continuing on with HDL and I'd be happy if there's any questions on the contract.
If there are no questions, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Now, is there any discussion? I see no one.
Thank you for affirming, Jeff, the accuracy and how much it benefits your, your work and the work of those in your division.
Of course, thank you.
I echo the same. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provision vote?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman.
Yes. The motion carries five zero. We're moving forward to 13B. Approval of Resolution 21-05 for Authorization of Signatures and Authority as required by the Orange County Department of Education. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on this approval tonight?
There is no one at this time.
Thank you so much. Thanks for keeping track of that. For Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours again.
All right, thank you. This is a standard requirement from the Orange County Department of Education. It's a basic update having to do with Dr. Winston leaving us and Mr. Conlon being now the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So we need to update our file with OCDE has authorized signers, which always has included in the past superintendent, the Assistant Superintendents of Business Services and Human Resources. This is where I'm bringing it to you today.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not may have a motion to approve the resolution? Osborne, second. Any discussion? See, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Conlon. We're so excited that you get to sign on the line and join us. We really appreciate you. We appreciate your guidance and all the hiring and your amazing personality and connection with people. So.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You deserve more than that. It's late. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Sorry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry? Did you nod yes?
She did. She did.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. The motion carries five zero. So we're moving forward with 13C. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the 2021, 2021, 2022 LBSD Comprehensive District and School Safety Plan tonight?
There is not.
Thank you for checking. And since there are no comments, Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours once again. You are popular tonight.
Oh, thank you. No, it's first time I've been popular in a long time. Thank you very much. So as you may recall, we presented the comprehensive district safety plan at the last board meeting as an information item. I did receive a very good question from President Norman regarding the plan. Other than that, we hadn't received any comments or feedback. And but the question, and I wanted to bring it up before the board, was in the plan, why is there no section on IT network protection or risks? And there is not that section in the comprehensive safety plan. However, it does exist outside of the safety plan. So every year, our IT department goes through an audit, IT network risk audit. And this year, they actually had someone from Orange County Department of Ed get into our network on purpose and see what they can do as far as damage. So from that, it led to weekly meetings with Mike and his IT staff and OCDE to address, address improved processes and procedures. No, no big risks haven't been corrected. So this is really just about continuous improvement as we go forward. And it could be possible that this does become part of the safety plan in the future. However, it's not a requirement at this time. So I just want to make sure I address that. And if there are any other questions, I'm happy to respond.
I'm looking around. I don't see anyone. I have a motion to approve the 20.1, 20.20. Kelly and Vickers, is there any discussion? Thank you guys for all the amazing work. Victoria, I know you're back there and, you know, a lot of this is you and and is it Ryan as well? Yeah, and Ryan and Jeff leading it and all of the team members who all are part of this. We really appreciate it. It's a big committee and we appreciate coordinating all of that, putting together. Victoria, can we, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with Soren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman.
Yes. The motion carries five zero. We're moving forward to 14A. Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the 2022-2023 Student Instructional Calendar tonight?
There is no one at this time.
Okay. With that, actually, you get to present.
Right. Thank you, President Norman. Members of the board, good evening. And so at the, so at the, the board granted direction to the district at the January 28th meeting to bring a second version of the 2022-2023 Student Instructional Calendar, pushing the start of school back from August 29th to August 22nd. So as shared previously, option one follows the board-approved calendar configuration of an 80, semester one, 100-day semester two, with the school year ending on June 15th. The option two that we're bringing you today has schools starting on August 22nd with an 85-95 semester configuration and the last day of school being June 8th. And then please note that with option two, it still maintains a 10-week summer in both the summer of 2022 and the summer of 2023. So we present these two options to you for the 2022-2023 Student Instructional Year Calendar. Your review.
Thank you for pointing that out about the summers. Does anyone have a question? If not, I'm going to look for a motion for adopting option number two of the 2020, 2022-2023 Student Instructional Calendar.
I make a motion to adopt option two.
Is there a second for that? Okay.
Second.
Okay. Victoria, did you get those? Perry and Osborne?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion?
I, I liked option two. I wanted to just throw another idea in, not having been part of previous calendar discussions. But I think the student learning, from what I've read and seen and seen in the research, student learning grows at the fastest pace in the fall versus the spring. So I kind of liked the concept of, of option two because it fit that model. And still seemed like it met all the previous intents of the past board work on the topic. But just looking at student learning and how much they gain in the beginning of the year versus at the end of the year when they start to taper off and kind of applying that logic to an 80 or an 85-day semester one. So that was my reasoning for liking option two. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also like option two because it's more equal with the 85-95, which is really important when we have semester classes, which we do have several of. So the difference between 80 and 100 is four weeks. So that's a big difference to cram in, especially in a semester class. Also because students will get out earlier so they can attend off-campus summer schools. They can take advantage of summer jobs and internships. I looked in the community college starts June 1st. So, you know, they would only, they could maybe do both at least for a week if they chose to do that. And looking at when other schools in the area got out, they all get out early. So I really like option two for our students.
I don't see any more discussion. I can echo all those same sentiments. I think having a student who had finals and a community college class right in practice, like it was a lot. So giving them a little more time, that's great. If there's no more discussion, then Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with Soren?
Soren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to 14B, the approval of, oh, actually, Mr. Conlon. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the Public Information Officer job description tonight?
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you for that. And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Normand. So again, as discussed at the January 28th board meeting, the board gave direction for the district to bring a new position of Public Information Officer to this meeting for review and approval. And as you know, the current configuration had the public communications as part of the deputy soup and prior to that, under the, as part of the assistance of instruction job description. But the need for a position dedicated to managing LBUSD's public information and community relation strategies has never been more apparent than during this pandemic. And a few data points to highlight the need for this position include, for one, is a vast majority of school districts already identifying and realize this is a necessity and have these positions, as well as local cities, including the beach, have dedicated staff solely responsible to help manage all aspects of public information for them. As another data point, we sent out 95 parent square messages in this calendar year alone. So just from the beginning of the pandemic till now, with the dismembered messaging that we, that we've needed to do. We've also seen our public records requests grow from 10 in 2018. They peaked at with 59 in 2019 and we have had 40 in this last calendar year, all requiring a large amount of multiple staff members' time to manage. Whereas this new role would manage all the public records requests and still work to get the information from other members. But to have that one person to kind of be the point to, to navigate that and sure all the timelines are met is, is really important. They're very time-consuming. As you've heard, management and both unions are in agreement that this is a valuable and much-needed position to support the needs of the district. A PIO will help strengthen our communication with all stakeholders and hopefully help to alleviate misinformation that tends to circulate occasionally. They can help us develop a strong proactive approach to public information and further strengthen the strong ties with Laguna Beach community. And finally, it aligns with the district superintendent goal number six, which is enhanced communication processes to engage, inform, educate all stakeholders every day. So we submit this PIO job description for your review and approval and welcome any questions that you may have.
I just want to say thank you. So I can, we can, if I can have a motion.
I do have a question. I can, I can wait.
You can make it on the other side too. I didn't see you want to say anything.
On the other side. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and make the.
I'll second it. Kelly Norman and discussion. Go ahead, Member Perry.
Okay, I'm really in favor of this. I think we really need this. Also, I do have some questions, though, about some of the extent of the, of the job. Now, like, how, how does it work with our board bylaw 90, 9010? Like if a board member speaks in public, we have to say, this is my opinion unless it's the board president and can, only the board president can really give the view of the board. Now, will this person also separate personal opinion from speaking on behalf of the board? Or is this person just going to speak on behalf of the superintendent? Is it going to be kind of like a surrogate, board president, superintendent?
No, they won't speak on behalf of the school board. That's reserved for, for you as the school board. The, this person, just like I do speak on behalf of the, of the school district in circumstances. And that's all that this role would do. So they would report, this role would report directly to me and speak on my behalf and in certain circumstances, similar to the public information officer role at the city level, right? So that the public information officer, obviously, it's a, it's actually a Laguna Beach Police Department officer who is that PIO. But he doesn't speak on behalf of the city council. He speaks simply on behalf of the city. And that would be the same situation for the public information officer.
I was looking at the, this person representing Laguna Beach at different community and school events. And it brought to mind when we, our, we had the Olympic stars and celebration at the high school. And Board Member Vickers was president then. And she did, well, I thought she did an outstanding speech congratulating them. Would this person be doing that instead of a board member?
No.
Okay. Okay.
But if we had, for example, they need representation at the Chamber of Commerce at meetings there or potentially be a part of Rotary to, to speak, that would be a role that they might be able to fill. I, you know, I was trying to go to Rotary, obviously, and now it's virtual. I haven't really had a chance to, to really peek my head in there more recently. But that would be the potential where they might speak just and present about things that might be going on in the district, et cetera. But no, we, we would reserve the things that are appropriate for the board to be done by the board.
Okay, I, thank you for that clarification. And when they talked about community organizations, I, I thought, boy, that might be overwhelming if they, like you said, have to do Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, AAUW, the art museum, the, they're just, you know, the Democratic Club, the Republican Club. I mean, they're not every organization we have, are they?
No, and this is in a political position.
No, okay, I shouldn't have said those, but.
No, no, they, they wouldn't. They're not going to be, we're not members of all those groups ourselves necessarily. Or we might be partially, but we don't attend everything because we just, we just simply can't. But if there was a request to have somebody come speak about, in provide an update, they might be, they might be coming to do that on my behalf, or I may be doing it. I've done it before at Rotary where I just gave a general update. So they're not going to be attending all of those different things. Our, the goal of this role is really to represent our schools and our students. And that is the intent. And along with our staff and help our staff communicate out with the work that they're doing inside their classroom.
And that is the intent and along with our staff and help our staff communicate out with the work that they're doing inside their classrooms to showcase that. Because, you know, it's not always easily seen because they're teaching the students and parents and everybody are at home and the community as a whole are, are not there. So how do we showcase the great things happening in our school district?
So it's really more public relations than community relations?
Yeah, I mean, they go hand in hand, but I would say a lot of it would be public relations, correct?
Well, when I, I, because I wanted to make sure, because we didn't have this before, I, I called some different districts even outside of Orange County and they almost all have, have one and say it's really necessary. But they did have some guidance. They said that they thought that, of course, these are all public relationship officers themselves or public relations themselves. And they said that they thought they should be able to choose which groups they belong to, that they thought they would get the most bang for their buck out of, not everyone. They also talked about following different social media sites. And one gave me an example of having a blogger in their district that said a lot of negative things about their schools. And so they reached out and to the blogger and met with them and tried to work on these issues. And they said they also really depend on board members coming to them with, and the superintendent, of course, but with, with issues in the community before they get big. And so they can reach out and see if there is something that they can do about them. So they kind of problem solve those things too. That's what they told me.
And I want to make sure we're not, we don't get into the how, though.
No, I'm just saying what, that, that, what they did and that it's very, that they thought it was very important to belong to the group of public information officers so they can really help each other.
Okay, I see. Our student board rep has his hand up. Member Perry, can we, are you okay pausing and we'll move on? Thank you. Okay, Soren.
Yeah, so are we able to modify, to modify this or are we disapproving this? The, the job description?
We are approving it. If we had consensus on something, it doesn't mean we can make comment to amend that approval to that consensus.
Okay, yeah, that's thought, I mean, as Dr. Lur said, I mean, the, the purpose of this, the, like, the job description's purpose, I think is really important, like, creating these like transparent lines of communication. I think it might be good, just like if we just add that to the description, it's like very, just like at the top, like above essential duties. And it's like, like lay that out so that, as this position is very much in the public, I think having this person be very like, I mean, you, I don't know how many people are going to like look all these bullet points, but just saying like, this person's job is blank, I think would be, would be effective and also be easy for organizational purposes, maybe. And so maybe we'd just put that top or something. And then I also thought just adding the word transparency into the job description somewhere might be beneficial as well, just to, as like, as, as I said, as the last point, just kind of like, just put it out there. So that's like in writing that this is part of that person's job.
I like that a lot.
To improve transparency and they can work it in however they see fit. Mr. Conlon, work that in. Do I have consensus on that?
I like that.
We have consensus on, on doing that and adding, just making sure transparency is very clear that that's what this job is in reference to is transparency. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I've noticed that the person that works for the city will go on to social media and clarify as rumors start to compound and there is misinformation. And I think that perhaps that might happen in this case, which would be beneficial to the district.
Yeah, one of our, one of the disadvantages that we have that the city does have an advantage on is specific to next door. We actually are not able to have an account unlike the city. And the city is actually able to have their own account and respond to things to clarify, but school districts have not been permitted that access as of, right, my understanding at this point, it's been a request that we had put in. But obviously for us, I agree, you know, the intent is to be proactive and communicate out effectively and efficiently. And as Member Perry noted, you know, be aware of things that are, that are out there that we need to provide, again, clarity to the general public on if there's misinformation being distributed. But again, we can't do it on next door. That's just, we don't have that capability.
No, but if you are aware of something, then we could do it by some other public.
Correct.
As far as a clarification.
Comment, questions too?
Go ahead, Member Osborne, Clerk Osborne.
Thank you. I wanted to point out, and I think it ties into the comment on next door. I'm an important part of this job description to me is also legislative advocacy. We have not experienced the impact of that more than in this year. And I, I think that that's an important, and that's also a very niche skill to find. So I just wanted to highlight that and make sure that that is being assessed when we interview potential, not when we, but when district interviews candidates. I also wanted to point out that these are, these are take it or leave it type of suggestions. I don't know if they have, they don't really need consensus, but there is a little bit of jargon in this job description and perhaps more than any other position cabinet level or director position that we hire. This might be somebody outside of education. There's mentioned a FERPA, which, you know, that's a just student privacy. So again, if we wanted this to potentially be attractive to somebody with governmental relations or good, strong PR communication, community partnership, but maybe as an in education or in that field, we might consider making it a little more vague and removing any jargon like that. And then also, you know, communications is such a rapidly evolving field. So, you know, making references to like InDesign or Word or Excel, it's probably better to just lead in that we do have a lot of leading edge communication tools in this district and we want this person to be, you know, to continue that innovative approach. And I didn't get that feeling from this job description. It doesn't actually match where we are in terms of being innovative and very leading edge with some of the communication tools that we use. So those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Suggestions.
Yeah.
Excellent suggestion. Be added or clarified.
Now, and I had a similar comment about just making sure it appealed to the innovation of the position. So same, same word. And then my second comment is that the public records request that act, another request are much more like almost a paralegal mindset. Right? So it's a unique position because you have that kind of leading edge innovator and you also have this person that needs to really be amazing at calendaring file clerk type person. So I know they'll find them, right? But when I read it, I felt more, it was a little more toned towards the paralegal than kind of innovative. So, but I try to get, because the weeds, for me, this is some of the weeds. I try to stay out of the weeds. We are not directing.
You should stay.
Yeah, stay in all the weeds. We're in the what. This is the what. We've been asking for this. We're so excited about this. So excited that the, the unions are behind it. And anyways, thank you for bringing it forward. And with that, can I get a motion? Do I already have a motion? I do have a motion. We're in discussion with that. And then we're comments. Can I get, Victoria, can you do a board member roll call beginning with Soren?
Sorry, did you say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. The motion carries five zero. And with that, we will move to number seventeen, sorry. Seventeen A, Mr. Conlon, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the February fourth, twenty twenty one special board meeting minutes tonight?
Oh, Lance. There are, there's no hands up at this time.
No hands up at this time. Okay, then may I have? I don't think there's really anything for you to present, right, on this, it's the minutes from the last meeting. That's what I was looking, I was going, who's presenting? Why is someone presenting? Okay, so are there any board comments or questions?
Just to adjust the starting time of the meeting, I believe it would be five PM.
Nice catch. It was nice catch. Okay, are there any other comments? I do want to make a quick comment, even though I don't think we have the same listeners as we did earlier. But just so that they understand what the segments are and why Member Perry will have to abstain from the vote is that this meeting on February fourth and the one we had in January is in reference to the lawsuit that she had filed, the second one against the district and each board member on December tenth, two thousand nineteen. And we met as required by law and closed session with conference with our legal counsel. Member Perry had complained in her lawsuit that she had been passed over to president and complained that she shouldn't have been excluded from a special subcommittee regarding confidential matters. The board formed the subcommittee after she had said privileged and confidential memo, our attorney to a third party not authorized to see it. The court dismissed her complaint that gave her permission to amend her complaint. They amended her complaint and the court dismissed it again. But in that second defeat, the court gave her yet another chance to amend her complaint. She did. September eleventh, twenty twenty, the court dismissed her complaint for good. This last November, the court awarded cost of the suit to the district. In short, Member Perry lost and cost the district money and time not spent on students but on her. Having lost, Board Member Perry has now appealed. The appellate court requires mediation discussion. They are not optional. Neither parties require to settle, but the parties are required to discuss it. And that was the purpose of this meeting and the one in January is to comply with the appellate court's requirements. And I have a motion to approve the February fourth, twenty twenty one with the five PM change of the minutes.
So moved.
The move.
So Vickers and Kelly and Victoria King, please conduct a board member roll call beginning with our student.
Doren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry? Abstention, correct? Thank you. Clerk, Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, so the motion carries four zero one, no, four zero zero one. And this brings us to eighteen. During the meeting, the next regular meeting will be Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty one. The Board Policy Workshop will be held Monday, March first at nine AM. Can I have a motion to adjourn from the meeting?
So moved.
Vickers?
Second.
Perry, okay, Vickers, Perry. I'm assuming there's no discussion. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with Soren?
Doren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, the motion carries five zero and we are journeying at nine forty four PM. Thank you, everyone, for sticking in and making this whole being. Bye.
Betty, good night.
Good night.